Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the council work session for Tuesday, November 18th. Could we all have a stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Justin Queenen.
Here.
Liam McCoy.
Here.
Madeira Robinson.
Here.
Natalie Coulson.
Here.
Jasmine Griffin.
Here.
Rashad Bates.
Here.
Rebecca Smith.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We had an executive session this evening related to personnel. Vice President Bates, do you have any announcements?
I unfortunately do not have any announcements. Normally, I go on Facebook and Instagram to get announcements, so please, if you guys have announcements, send it to my email, rbaits@narsetown.org. Thank you.
Counsel, does anybody have any additional announcements they would like to make? Councilwoman Coulson.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking everyone who attended my town hall. It was truly a success because of our residents who showed up, shared their concerns, and offered their support. I also want to thank the speakers who joined us and for your hard work and dedication, and I truly mean that. You guys do an amazing job for the people of Narsetown, and that does not go unnoticed. So, thank you. Secondly, I do want to also take a moment to recognize someone very special. Her name is Ms. Sheila Carter. I had the privilege of working with her as we addressed a few concerns at her father's home, and in a short time, she showed such kindness and grace. She was recently, she recently passed, and my sincere condolences go out to her family, friends, and the entire Mount Zion Church community. She was a beautiful soul, and I am grateful to have had the opportunity to know her. Thank you.
Counsel, any other announcements? All right. Next up on the agenda, like last time, we are going to move both of the, or we are going to move the hearing tonight up to the front of our meeting. So next up, we have under planning and municipal development, the request for conditional use master plan approval for the preserve at Stony Creek.
So, what we have just announced, President, is a motion to open a public hearing for the request for conditional use for master plan approval for the preserve at Stony Creek, listed as agenda item A, under planning and municipal development.
Counsel, is there a motion to open the conditional use hearing? Can I have a roll call, please?
Justin Queenen.
Aye.
Liam McCoy.
Aye.
Madeira Robinson.
Aye.
Natalie Coulson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
Sure. Before the applicant begins this evening, I'm going to go through some administrative matters, just so counsel is aware. Just so counsel and the public understand, conditional use is where counsel sits as a quasi judicial body, like a zoning hearing board, to hear this matter. So, you, there are certain, this use is provided for as a permitted use, but there are certain criteria that the applicant has to meet, and counsel can go ahead and grant an approval or place conditions on that approval. Because you're sitting in a quasi judicial body, I want to ask a question of the public. You'll have the opportunity at the end of the presentation at this hearing and after questions by members of counsel, to go ahead and comment and say what you like or you don't like before counsel would render any kind of decision. But I have to ask, does anybody in the public ask for any kind of party status? And what I mean by party status means is that you live very close to the property, that you want the opportunity to call witnesses, and to cross-examine any of the witnesses that the applicant puts up. Now, again, this does not preclude you from commenting at the overall end of this presentation. You're free to state your views, but I'm seeing, does anybody, is anybody requesting what's called party status? Okay. I'm looking out at the audience, I don't see anybody requesting party status. Then what I'm going to do is I'm going to mark a couple of exhibits. The applicant also gave me a series of exhibits, but I'm going to mark the municipalities exhibits first. A, A1, not A1, M1 will be a copy of the Times Herald advertisement for the conditional use master plan. And just for the record, this was continued from our meeting on November 5th. It was continued on the record. We have a copy of that transcript related to that. That, along with the advertisement and a copy of that transcript, will be admitted as M1. M2 will be a copy of the continuance letter, asking that they continue to November 18th today, and that's from Mr. Maris, the applicant, to our planning department, and it's dated, it's dated the 24th of October, 2025. M3 will be the public notice related to this, that there was a notice of a public hearing on Wednesday, November 5th at 6:30 PM, with all the legal requirements as required in a notice of public hearing. But again, that was continued on the, on the record to this evening. M4 will be what's a depiction of the posting of the property, meaning someone went out onto the property itself and gave notice of this public hearing, where people would have the ability to comment. M5 will be another posting of this public hearing related, right by Gate 1 of Norristown State Hospital, talking about this hearing. Let's see, try to open this. M6 will be a copy of the Montgomery County Planning Commission review of this, dated October 10th, 2025. And M7 will be a letter from Panoni Engineers, dated November 10th, 2025, related to, related to the review of this hearing. Additionally, the applicant gave me a series of exhibits. A1 will be a site plan, a mixed-use and retail plan, open space, and various other plans that the applicant will describe on the record and go ahead and give to counsel. And he's also, to meet the requirements on the conditional use, going to present a series of witnesses. A2 will be a copy of the resume or the CV of Mr. Shapiro. A3 will be a copy of a resume of Mr. Hetzel. A4 will be a copy of the resume of Ms. Vigilante. A5 will be a copy of the resume of Mr. Jordan. And then, we have, A7 will be that... Okay, don't, okay, missed it. Mr. Haas will be A6. A7 is duplicative? Okay. Yep. A8 will be a copy of a memorandum from Langen Engineering related to the project. A9 will be a fiscal impact study, I assume Mr. Shapiro will talk about. Okay, from Barton Partners. Do you have any other exhibits that you'd mark, want marked at this time?
I have other exhibits.
And what, and related to these experts, he's going to want to qualify each of the witnesses as experts, and he's going to want to offer what's called an offer of proof related to that, saying that if they were called to testify, essentially what they would say. He's going to go ahead and put all that in the record. If that does not satisfy you, or you have questions related to the expertise of these folks, feel free to ask, and we can bring these individual folks up, and you can ask them whatever questions they want, okay? He's just doing this to say, there's going to be a lot of testimony tonight to save a little time for counsel, but if you have any specific questions on one or any of these people, you'll be, we'll be happy to call them up as witnesses, and you could ask them whatever they want.
Thank you. Good evening, members of counsel. You've all seen me a lot. My name's Anthony Maris. I'm a, I'm a principal with Pinnacle Realty Development Company. I'm also an attorney, so I'm here in dual roles tonight. Mr. Kilkenny, do you require that I be sworn as an attorney, or is that good enough for purposes of information?
No, it's fine.
Okay. As Mr. Kilkenny indicated, I have a number of exhibits. A1 is a 17-page packet, which starts with the slide that you're seeing up there, which we'll run through, and Mr. Shapiro will give you, as counsel, an overview of what the project now looks like, where we've come, from when we first did our RFP with you. Exhibit number two is the resume and CV, as they call it, of Seth Shapiro. Mr. Shapiro is a principal at Barton Partners. He's the director there of urban design. Mr. Shapiro has a master's degree from Harvard, a bachelor's degree from the University of Miami. He has been qualified numerous times. If you happen to be following the Exton Mall case, his name appears there. He's so proud that I said that tonight. But he, he has been offered and accepted throughout the Commonwealth as an expert in urban planning and design, and I would submit to offer you as an expert on that basis, you can review his CV. He's worked on a number of major projects in the area. Exhibit A3 is Eric Hetzel. Mr. Hetzel is a cert, is a certified planner. He's licensed by the American Planning Association and the American Institute of Certified Planners. Mr. Hetzel prepares, among the things, ordinances for townships, but also does fiscal benefit analysis. Exhibit A9 tonight is a summary of that report. A4 is the CV of Amory Vigilante. Ms. Vigilante is a professional engineer, licensed in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. She is a principal at Langen Engineering. I am offering her as an expert in traffic and transportation engineering. She has worked on, again, numerous projects throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and has been accepted as an expert in numerous jurisdictions and before many municipal boards. And again, just as Mr. Kilkenny said, I'm doing this in this way, because otherwise, I have to put them up here and have you run them, run through all their education and all their background, and it takes a little while. So, in the interest of the time economy, I'm doing it this way. Mr. Zach Jordan is a professional landscape architect and an engineer in training. He was instrumental in the preparation of the latter part of package A1 that you see with the civil plans, so he will be testifying with regard to the content of the civil plans and that you see as part of the package for tonight. Mr. Haas is also here as a professional engineer who also worked on the project. His testimony will be supplemental to that of Mr. Jordan if necessary. A7 we removed, and then A8 is a summary prepared by Langen Engineering for the benefit of the board tonight, just, again, reviewing from a civil engineering standpoint, the various criteria that are necessary to be in the plan, and giving you a written version of it. So, again, we don't have to go through every line item of the ordinance. It will be admitted if you accept the report based after Mr. Jordan's testimony and Mr. Haas's if necessary, with regard to the elements of the conditional use plan. Bless you. And then, exhibit A9, as I said, will be Mr. Hetzel's report. Does counsel have any questions at this point with regard to the qualifications of the experts that I'm going to be presenting tonight?
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, if you want to go through any of their CVs or background, this is your time. That's why I asked that.
I'd like the record to reflect that there was no opposition and to, to them be accepted as experts, and on that basis, I would ask for a motion to be made to accept the various individuals, being Mr. Shapiro, Mr. Hetzel, Ms. Vigilante, Mr. Jordan, and Mr. Haas, as experts in their relative fields, as I've offered them.
Counsel, is there a motion to accept the named experts as, named individuals as experts in their relative fields?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And one other thing, I just wanted to clean up, add one more exhibit. M8 is a copy of the actual conditional use application from the applicant, dated September 12th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Good catch. With that, I will call Mr. Shapiro, and we'll start with exhibit A1. For the audience's benefit, the slides that we're going to, that Mr. Kilkenny has and the cinematographer has appear up here on the screen. You got to take a seat. Or you want to stand here? You can do it. Have a seat.
If anybody wants them, well, I can ask them. Why not put them in the middle of counsel, because he can take a look as well, besides what you see on the screen.
Yes, please. Mr. Shapiro, do you state your name for the record? And you're a principal of Barton Partners.
Correct.
And you've been retained by the applicant to help prepare this, this package, which is for counsel tonight, for master plan approval.
That's correct.
And, again, as Mr. Kilkenny said, but I want to remind everyone, this is a master plan, this is not a land development plan. There are details that are inherently missing from this, like all the grading and all the stormwater details. This is, if you think of it, this is you're approving the use. And if counsel remember, this plan, when you look at it, bears a striking similarity to what we did as our RFP originally. Importantly, there was a bit of a reduction in yield, as we tested stormwater, which we knew we were going to have to do. There were some things we had to account for. So, we'll talk through those tonight, both from a planning standpoint, Mr. Shapiro, and with Mr. Haas, I mean with, sorry, Mr. Jordan, as part of the civil engineering part. With that, Mr. Shapiro, could please explain to counsel what they're looking at, which is the first page of exhibit A1?
Sure. So, this is an illustrative plan of what we had originally been proposing for this site when we were selected, the winners of the RFP for the redevelopment of the site. It shows a mixed-use commercial area in the southwest corner, at the corner of Sterger and Stainbridge Street. It has a townhouse, it actually has some additional multifamily buildings going to the north, and then some townhouses down Stainbridge Street. We also have several different types of townhouses, and then, sort of, what would be, all the way to the east would be sort of commercial flex.
And, just programmatically, can you tell the board how many, tell counsel, rather, how many residential?
Yep.
This is, I wanted to do the new one first. How many we have? This is the old one, okay? We'll get to the new. The slides are out of order. That's your fault.
Okay.
Apologize. This is A1 that I've, I've handed him, so, although...
No, this shouldn't be A1.
Well, A1 is the whole package.
Right, A1 is the whole package. But the first drawing in the package was the old plan, the next drawing, the next...
So, this was what we originally submitted to you?
Correct.
Okay. Which is in the package. Counsel goes to the next, I mean, yes.
So, thank you. So, this is the current master plan. And as Mr. Maris had mentioned, there were some minor changes to this plan associated with the location of stormwater management. We just had some more information, and also, a little bit of a change in the specific footprints of certain townhouses. It actually resulted in a reduction of the number of residential units, not a huge reduction, I think it was between 20 and 30 units in the end. But what this shows is 423 townhomes. Now, there are three different types of townhomes on this, on this plan. There are 166 stacked townhouses. That is that there's two townhouses in each footprint, one essentially on top of the other, sometimes they get a lock. There are also something, 157 rear-loaded townhouses. Those are townhouses that have their garage and driveway behind them, in a much more traditional sort of sense, so they have streets, stoops, and front porches along the street side. And then, on, on the perimeters, we have front-loaded townhouses, sort of a more suburban product with the driveway and garage facing front, but also with a front door.
I mean, if I could interrupt you, are all those townhouse tags permitted under the new zoning ordinance as enacted that applies to this property?
They are.
Okay.
We also have 258 rental apartment units. And we actually have three different types of apartment units as well. We have 96 sort of traditional garden-style walk-ups, those are three-story units that are served by a shared stair. Then we have mixed-use buildings. So, the buildings on the lower left that are sort of kit have retail or commercial uses on the ground floor and three stories of residential above, so they would be elevator served. And then we also have a podium building, where there's parking on the ground floor and three or four levels, I think it's three levels, of apartments above. So, there's 258 dwelling units.
And are those types of apartments, Mr. Shapiro, permitted under the ordinance?
Yes, they are. So, for, so that totals 681 dwelling units. In addition to the residential program, we have 69,450 square feet of retail. Some of that is located, again, beneath those apartment units. We have what we're calling a supermarket. We have a couple standalone retail pads, for lack of a better term, but that, those, that total there totals 69,000, and then we have...
If I could interest, and those, those uses are not yet identified, but all those uses would be permitted, assuming they meet the criteria in the retail use section, would be permitted under the terms of the zoning ordinance?
That is correct. And then finally, we have the industrial office tech. That part of the plan changed a little bit as well. One, we, I think, provided a maintenance yard at the request of the borough, and a place for that up on the, up on the northern, sort of northern-eastern extent of the site, about two acres there.
Just if I may interrupt on that point, Mr. Shapiro, if counsel members, the maintenance yard used to be to the far right, where there's a stormwater basin now, DEP gets a little funny, they make you put it at the, at the low point in the site so you can catch water to it, so we had to move that. But we did that in consultation with, with, with the planning department as to where that was going to be.
Right, and as I mentioned again, really, the main drivers of change of this plan were, were very much driven by stormwater management. But that, in total, there's 228,000 square feet of that sort of industrial office, one-story office, and you can see those in the larger footprints on the right side.
And I believe the next page of the plan shows some of the changes that made, just be illustrative?
Yes, so this actually sort of highlights those areas that changed the most. It's interesting, because of the stormwater management requirements, we actually ended up adding open space. And I think, I think maybe planned better, because on the north part of the plan, where you see in the upper left, we now have units both facing streets and sort of an internal open space that will also serve as stormwater management, but will also be a gathering and occupiable space. In the middle of the plan, we have a vertical element. We sort of had what was a boulevard, and now it's actually widened out. So, now it's more lush and landscaped, and again, will help with stormwater management. And then the neighborhood, just to the right of that, also has sort of a central open space associated with it. Moving further to the right, you can see, as Mr. Maris mentioned, the maintenance area that we had moved. We now know that we do need to have a much larger stormwater management area. Again, gravity being what it is, that is located at the low point of the site, so we had to move where we had the maintenance area and move that further to the north. So, sort of a zoom-in of that.
And the next slide in the package just illustrates the various land uses in a shaded coloring?
That's correct. And again, the program on this sheet is, again, sort of repeated for everybody. You can see the, the red being the retail, we use actually international land use colors, the red being the retail, sort of the pink area is the mixed-use, the, the actual purple building is the podium building I mentioned, the orange buildings are the walk-ups, and then we have the three different types of townhouses based on their color, the stacked being the sort of brightest, sort of orange, the light yellow being the front-loaded, and then the tan being the rear-loaded, and then in the blue, we have our, our flex tech office.
And then the next series of slides are just blowups of the various sections, correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct. And this just goes to show you the level of detail that we had to go into and, for this portion of the master plan. We got a lot more specific on the building footprints that we're proposing, and also sort of the open space sequencing and circulation. In fact, this page and the next three or four pages are all zoom-in blowups of the, of the plan, and you can see, one of the hallmarks of this plan is sort of every building, every building grouping, every building faces either a street or an open space, which I think gives address to, to the project. And we also have this little town square, which is up there right now, and by town square, I do mean triangle, that has sort of angled parking, would have a shared space that area could be closed off for larger festival areas. So, you know, when we talk about open space, you might just, for, for calculation purposes, you just include the triangle, but in reality, it's, puts it off for like a farmer's market or some other kind of festival. It's really building face to building face, and it becomes a much larger...
And if counsel members, this is what we called the woo-norf in our original concept plan, correct?
The what?
W O O N R F. It's a Dutch word. It'll tell you you're spelling your own. And it is, means shared space. That means it's not a space for cars, it's not a space for pedestrians, it's a space for everybody. You see them a lot with their bollards instead of curbs, their special paving, it's sort of a, it's a European concept that, and you can see them, they're actually quite popular now, these days. There's actually a good example of one in Ardmore at Sparkle Square.
And the reason for that type of concept, and you see the connectivity to the neighboring streets, was so that, in your experience as a planner, this was to make the community connected to the rest of Narsetown, rather than an isolated community, which was inward-facing, correct?
That's correct. I mean, this, this mixed-use area where the retail is, where the mixed-use apartments are, was really intended as a gateway to what this is, which is a new name. And we wanted that to be as opening and welcoming as possible, and we even start this with just that square at the very corner of Stainbridge and Sterger Street as a sort of a community group, which will also have sort of a water feature.
And then the rest, and then the next panel, please, next...
And the next panels, again, are just the, the blowups, so you can just sort of see the, the fabric of the spaces that we're, we're, we're creating. You can see at the, on the bottom of this, we know we have some mature trees along Stainbridge Street, so we're, we're going to do our best to keep some of those as, you know, the non-invasive ones. So, we had to move things up, and it, basically, this plan is just a much more refined version of the prior application.
And for, yeah, there's a number of homes we talked about around this plan, can you explain the parking regimen just generally for counsel?
Sure. So, the orange color, those are the stacked townhomes. Each of the stacked townhomes comes with one garage space and one driveway space. The brighter yellow are front-loaded townhomes. They are about 24 feet wide, 22 to 24 feet wide. They each come with a two-car garage and a driveway spaces. And then you have the orange or the tan, which are rear-loaded townhouses. Those also come with a driveway and a garage space. So, every sort of for-sale townhouse here has two off-street parking spaces. But one of the things we also show is on-street parking, and that on-street parking is not only to accommodate visitors, but when you have a, a parking space between a planting strip and then a sidewalk, it just becomes a much better walkable street process, just having wider sort of streets where cars can be as quickly as possible.
And programmatically, in laying out this plan and working with Langen Engineering on this, you accounted for pedestrian access, correct?
Absolutely. It's actually the hallmark of, I think, all of our work, is we try to make places as pedestrian-friendly as possible. You know, there is a, a network of sidewalks here on, on both sides of the street that really connect the whole thing together. And in fact, I believe the next slide, not that one.
Next one? There you go.
Okay. So, we like to do these plans, we call this the open space framework, other people just refer to it as diagram, but what this shows is the sort of the connectivity of the streets, the parks, and the open spaces. Talk about streets, parks, and open spaces in the same sentence, because streets and roads are different, and what we have internal to this are streets. Streets are for people, roads are for cars. And so, we have tree-lined streets with sidewalks, with planting strips, some of the, as I mentioned, some of the streets have parallel parking on it that just makes them even that much more comfortable to walk.
And the applicant and the design, this all, this also contemplates connection to the Liberty Bell Trail along Stainbridge Street?
It does. Off to the, off, thank you, off to the west, no, sorry, the east. Land north is, is not quite up, but there is the idea of connecting this whole pedestrian-friendly neighborhood to that Liberty Bell Trail, which would connect through towards...
Well, connects to the state park, and then ultimately, I guess you could walk down to the zoo. And in, you helped, again, as I said, Langen, prepare these plans. There are dimensional requirements in the ordinance in terms of setbacks and building height, and, you know, side yards, front yards. Does the plan as submitted as part of A19 comply with all the dimensional requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance as recently enacted by counsel?
It does, and in fact, the next slide... And in fact, the next slide actually shows sort of the engineered version of that open space plan, where the sort of the precise dimensioning is, is really sort of double and triple-checked. This is when you really start to get into the, into the stormwater management framework. But the, we like to do the prettier drawings, the one before. This is what the engineer-
And, Mr. Shapiro, would it be fair to say that there is approximately twelve-point-one-six acres of open space, which is about eighteen percent of the site?
That is correct.
And that is complying with the terms of the ordinance?
And it's complying with the terms of the ordinance.
And there are a number of, in the ordinance, there are a number of architectural and other components which are being reserved as set forth in yours until the preliminary plan would happen to get past this stage of this, correct?
Exactly. We didn't actually want to go into too much detail into the architecture at this point. That's next, in terms of, of what those are, but there are some guidelines and standards that are in the ordinance that we will need to comply with.
And, so council's aware, there will be a programmatic architectural standard that's applied site-wide to this?
That's correct.
Okay. I have no other questions of Mr. Shapiro. Oh, Mr. Shapiro does have one more, and he reminded me of the phasing plan.
So the next plan is the actual phasing plan. And you can see, we've actually broken this into three phases. Phase one, along Stanbridge, which would be the, the red areas. Then we have the blue and the yellow. I'm not sure about the specific timeline, and obviously, I think this is gonna be subject to some revision as things move along, but I do believe the ordinance has a minimum percentage of the site that needs to be within a specific phase, and I think most of these get close to double that. So I think it's ten percent, like our smallest phase is nineteen.
For council's edification, there's a requirement in the ordinance that essentially you couldn't just build all the residential and run away. You have to build component pieces of it. If you happen to run out of a section, you can move on, but the idea is that council gets the benefit of their bargain, right? That you get the commercial, the residential, the other components all come along together in an organized fashion. I will, as a developer, I will tell you, this will likely change based on the availability of sewer, water, electric. Also, if a great user was to come in for the industrial space, and we wanted to do all that first, we would come back and talk to you. So this is as proposed now. I want council to be aware that this is a living document and a living plan. It will evolve, and we'll be varying this a little bit, but the idea always is that you're getting a bit of everything. So it's a little bit of a buffet. With that, any, we're good?
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Just one, I, one, thank you for explaining the plan to us in so much detail. I have very few questions, because most of them, you kind of answered as I went through it. I heard you answer why the stormwater moved. I'm wondering, the reduction in the number of townhomes, was that similar reason to fit more green space in for stormwater management, or was there another reason in the number, reduction in the number of townhomes?
So the reduction really had to do with the extension of the open space. The extension of the open space was driven by greater detail in stormwater management. We found out places where you can perhaps infiltrate, where you can get a better understanding of the site's topography. As Tony so eloquently mentioned, water runs downhill. I haven't figured out a way to have that happen yet. So we had, you know, it was a learning process. And then I think the last thing that sort of drove that reduction in density, we got a little bit more refined into specific footprints of the townhouse, like the building, specifically, I think, some of the rear-loaded, we need to improve the, the, and after, maybe the possible wider, and, and-
What the, the, thank you. And speak. Thank you, and I would just say to comment, I appreciate the way that the additional green space is integrated throughout the entire plan, so every little, you know, component of the neighborhood gets its piece of green space, so I appreciate that as well.
This is actually something we worked quite hard to do.
Other questions of Mr. Shapiro? Thank you. Next, I'm gonna call Ms. Anne Marie Vigilante to discuss traffic. And can we go back to slide number two, which is the current, where am I? No, she is. Hello? Can you state your name for this?
I'm just ready to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. Anne Marie Vigilante.
Ms. Vigilante, you've been hired by the applicant to be the traffic engineer consultant, correct?
I have, yes.
And for this conceptual plan, this master plan process, have you examined the projected traffic flows for this project?
I have.
And have you formed an opinion as to whether the applicant will be able to adequately and safely account for the traffic which is shown, which will be generated by this project when built?
I have.
And what would the applicant, in high-level terms, because again, this is the use, and every unit's not set yet, so the final traffic counts haven't all been set, but generally speaking, can you describe for council what you will be doing to ensure that this project has safe means of ingress and egress, and safe pedestrian and vehicular traffic access points?
Sure. As part of the process, we will be working with the municipality staff in preparation of a transportation impact study. Transportation impact study will look at the various uses, various uses, it will look at the trips being generated for those uses, it will look at the surrounding roadway network, various surrounding intersections, and determine the impact of those intersections, or the trips generated as part of this project. We'll also look at things like existing and proposed developments in the area that may impact this air, this region as well. And honestly, it'll go through that whole process, and we'll determine whether we need to do any type of mitigation measures to make this a safe and efficient means of-
Can you, um, can you ask, is there a way that-
No, I feel like I'm-
Oh.
Sorry.
Is that better? Ah.
Technology.
Do you want me to repeat that, or are you guys good with, um?
If you repeat it, I'll be helped.
Okay. So we'll, we'll back up a little bit. So as part of the project, we will be required to prepare a transportation impact study. That transportation impact study will look at the various uses we are proposing, and the traffic that will be generated, or estimated to be generated, as part of those uses. We will look at the surrounding roadway network, and a handful of various intersections within the region, and determine how the intended uses will impact those various intersections, and look through, look to work with the municipality staff to come up with mitigation measures, if necessary, to accommodate the additional traffic that we may be putting on the roads per this project.
And just for council's, and for the public's edification, you don't just prepare the study on your own, it's done in consultation with the township's planning professionals and tra, and engineering professionals that relate to this, correct?
Exactly. We'll work with them to come up with the parameters associated with that transportation impact study.
And that will include background trip counts that, that have to be done, projections on, assuming background growth, including projects that you know of that are in the area, population assumptions, and that traffic impact study not only looks today, but also looks at a five-year forward window, and when the development's built, and has a projection that relates to that, correct?
It does.
And that's so that there's a reasonable degree of certainty that, while you don't know every project that's coming, you're using historical norms, and those historical norms give you an indication of what future growth could be, correct?
Exactly.
And then your traffic plan has to account for tho, those things. And that traffic, that full traffic impact study will start to be prepared after this conditional use process, and would be submitted along with the preliminary plan submission, if we get to that point, correct? And you talked about mitigation, just so, not that we know what that's going to be yet, but can you just give council examples of what traffic mitigation would be?
Sure. Depending on the impacts to the various intersections, there's, you know, a whole host of mitigation measures that we can propose, whether it be changes to traffic signal timing, traffic signal modification, or roadway geometry modification, introduction of pedestrian phases to signals, or, you know, locations, new signals. There's a, a variety of improvements that can be proposed to mitigate for these types of projects.
And all of those mitigation efforts would be the responsibility of the applicant?
Absolutely.
I have no other questions of Ms. Vigilante at this time, does council have any?
Counsel, any questions? I see none.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to call Mr. Eric Hetzel.
Thank you. Back on the mic, Sophie. Not too close to, appreciate it. Can you please state your name?
Eric Hetzel, E-R-I-K-H-E-T-Z-E-L.
Thank you. I'm just ready to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that, um, so about-
I do.
Mr. Hetzel, you were hired by the applicant to prepare a fiscal benefit summary, correct?
Correct.
And the summary includes an analysis part, right?
That's right.
Just for, so council's aware, and I know you did this previously, can you explain to council what a fiscal benefit summary is, just at a, at a very high level?
There are two elements to it. One is a fiscal impact analysis, which looks at the annual revenues and costs that are generated by new development to the township, to the school district, and to the county. That's done according to a methodology known as the Rutgers Method, developed by the Rutgers University Center for Urban Policy Research. It's a per capita cost multiplier method, which based the costs on new residents and employees that are generated by development. It looks at revenues as they are generated according to the various revenue sources found in the budget documents for each of the taxing authorities. Second element to the fiscal benefit analysis that I conducted is a economic impact analysis, which looks more on a regional basis, at the economic ripple effect that this level of investment will have at this location, both during the construction phase and during the operations phase, once development's up and running.
So just at a high level for council, there, you know, if you look at this as three phases, two phases really, the construction phase and the operational phase, what is the total economic output to the regional economy projected from this project during the construction phase?
The total economic output is over six-hundred-and-sixty million dollars.
And for the jobs that are created, how many jobs are directly created in the construction of this project?
One-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety jobs during the construction phase, direct jobs, people working onsite, plus an additional two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight jobs in the industries and trades that are supporting the construction operations.
And in terms of revenue associated with those almost four-thousand total jobs during the construction phase, what is the total fiscal earnings of, of those, all those wage earners?
Those wage earners will be earning in excess of two-hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars.
And in terms of the total investment in the project by the developer, applicant, and all the building entities, what would the estimated total investment in construction dollars be?
Roughly three-hundred million dollars.
Now, in terms of the operations phase, there's a non-residential component and a residential component, right? So in the non-residential component, which is the commercial space and the tech industrial flex space, the other commercial space, how many direct, uh, full-time jobs are created?
Four-hundred-and-seventy-two.
And how many additional indirect or induced jobs?
Be four-hundred-and, four-hundred-and-forty-six.
And associated earnings with those jobs?
In excess of forty-three million dollars.
And the total economic input, direct, im, output of the project, just on the residential basis?
Estimated in hun, one-hundred-and-sixty-two million.
And the, at, for the residential component, the total projected household incomes over, for the project, and what would that be?
Estimated about six-hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-five million dollars annually.
And that results in what, in terms of consumption dollars to the local economies?
Roughly fifty-two-point-eight million dollars in consumption in the, in the local and regional economies.
And at a high level for council, just on an annualized basis, what is, is this, does this project create a net fiscal benefit, or a net fiscal detriment to the, to the municipality of Norris Town?
A net fiscal benefit to the municipality of Norris Town.
How about the school district?
The school district, yes, as well.
How about the county?
Uh, the same for the county, a net fiscal benefit. That'd be revenues exceeding costs for all three taxing authorities.
And you, you helped prepare the one that was part of the original RFP. There's been a reduction in the net fiscal benefit, because there's been a little bit of a loss of yield. But can you still tell council today what that net fiscal benefit would be on a combined, a two, what the net fiscal benefit to the township, to the municipality, to the school district, and the county will be?
Yeah, the net fiscal benefit to the municipality is approximately one-point-three million dollars annually. It's one-million-three-hundred-and-thirteen, two-hundred-and-twenty-five. The school district will see a net fiscal impact benefit of two-million-two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. And the county will see a net fiscal positive impact of one-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
And the county's always the smallest portion in this part of Pennsylvania, correct?
It is, and it's harder to, to measure, because it's a much larger area, and it, it's absorbing impacts from many more municipalities. So the school district and the tam, and the local municipality are more straightforward to predict.
And the proposed market value of the proposed development, just on a, not, not on an assessed basis, but the market value would be approximately how much after construction?
Uh, close to three-hundred million dollars.
And the residential, the assessed value of that would be how much?
Uh, about ninety million dollars.
And that's because there's a taxing ratio that's applied to the market value, correct?
That's correct.
And that, this report was prepared using the current common level ratio to compute that valuation, and current assessment process, correct?
That's correct. Specific to Montgomery County, correct.
And to be fair to say, Mr. Hetzel, that the total revenues on a gross basis, would be about eight-million-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-nineteen dollars?
Correct. That's for all three taxing authorities combined.
And the expenses related to the project would be approximately four-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars?
Correct.
That gets you to the three-million-three-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars, correct? I have no other questions of Mr. Hetzel, with regard to fiscal benefit portion. Counsel?
Counsel, any questions? Counselwoman Robinson.
Thank you, thank you both. I just did have a question. You were moving so fast through the millions, wow, that is exciting. I just got lost a little bit on some of the frequencies. Just tracking back to the net fiscal benefit, it was one-point-three million annually to the municipality, and then there was a two-plus million to the school district, was that also on an annual basis?
Yes, these are all annualized.
Got it. Were all the listed?
Yes.
Through the gross annualized?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other-
And that report, Ms. Robinson, is in exhibit A-9 to the report. And just for the record, you prepared exhibit A-9, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
My question is related to the net fiscal benefit for the school district. Assuming, I, I have a good understanding about what net means, hopefully it does, but some of the questions I get is, hey, isn't that gonna create a lot of students for the school district that's gonna cost the school district? Is the two-point-eight million dollars accounting for the cost of educating any children that may come into this neighborhood?
It is, and it doesn't account for students that may attend private schools or non-public schools, so it's counting all school-age children.
And just for council's benefit, there's a statistical method that you arrive at how many school-age children would be generated by this. In your summary, how many school-age children are you assuming, this is not just public school, this is all school-age children across the entire development?
Uh, I'm estimating a hundred-and-four school-age children.
And some of those may not attend Norris Town schools at all, they could go to Catholic school or private school, homeschool, correct?
Correct.
But this assumes that the worst-case scenario, all one-hundred-and-four go to school, and this benefit is still net of those hundred-and-four students, if they weren't all to attend?
Correct. And it assumes a cost per student that I would consider fairly conservative, about twenty-seven thousand dollars per student, that's based on instructional and support costs found in the, in the school district budget. That's reported by the school district on a per-student basis, about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. If other multipliers are available, demographic multipliers to estimate the number of school children, you can apply that, that per-student multiplier to it- children, you can apply that, that per-student multiplier to, to see how many more students it would take to reduce or possibly increase the net fiscal benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hetzel? Thank you, Mr. Hetzel.
We will get to public comment.
Next, I'll call Mr. Zach Jordan.
Please state your name.
Zachariah Jordan, Z-A-C-H-A-R-I-H-J-O-R-D-A-N.
Mr. Jordan, you're employed by Langen Engineering, and you worked with Barton to help prepare Exhibit Package A1, correct?
That is correct.
And you were involved in the preparation of all of these plans in some form or another. So, you're familiar with everything here.
That's correct.
And you also received from Panone Engineering what's been marked as A7, the Panone Review Letter?
Yes, we did.
And you also prepared for council and my benefit tonight, Exhibit A8, which is a summary of all the conditional use requirements from a civil engineering standpoint, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. First, I'd like to, just before we get into the stormwater and everything else, Panone prepared a review letter. Can you just summarize for council, were there things, and this, I'm going to put it in a couple categories, were there things that Panone said that were not, the plan was not compliant with?
They had no items that were, that the plan was not in compliance with.
And there were some items that they noted would have to be addressed at a later point, like architectural standards and some other things like that. Those would all be what's called a will comply, correct?
That is correct. That's, we will comply with those items during the land development process.
In your experience as a registered landscape architect, would you generally describe this as what's called a clean review letter?
Yes, we are very appreciative of receive that letter.
You guys all did a very good job to get that. Doesn't, in our world, it doesn't happen very often on the first or second shot. So, a little bit of a compliment to our team here. But just at a high level for council, and I'm going to walk you through your review letter first, and then we'll talk a little bit about the plans. As Mr. Shapiro testified, all of the uses that are proposed here are permitted under the ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
And the minimum lot requirement in this district is 10 acres, and we have about 67.32 acres, correct?
That is also correct.
And the current gross floor area is 1,500, 1,577,378 square feet, and a site area of 2,932,000 square feet for a floor area ratio of .54, correct?
That is correct.
And that is below the minimum required, the maximum allowed under the ordinance is .7?
That's correct, yeah. We are below the maximum required floor area.
And we talked about parking. There is a parking study that's required as part of the conditional use process, and that will be completed, and that's example of when those will comply, is correct?
That is correct.
And all the other building setbacks, lengths, and everything that is depicted on this plan meet all of the dimension, what's called dimensional requirements in the ordinance? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the 18 acres of, 18.1% open space that Mr. Shapiro talked about is in excess of the 15% required, correct?
That is correct.
And all public access and everything else has been accounted for, and future connectivity to the balance of the Norristown State Hospital property and the state park, and the Norristown State Park have also been accounted for in this?
Yeah, that's correct. Our plan and the plan help, assisted with Mr. Shapiro, does include a number of sidewalk connections and other connections to the existing Norristown State Hospital.
And looking at what's up on the screen here, which is Page 2 of Exhibit A1, there's a really wide green spine running from Stanbridge Street up into, up into the state hospital. Can you explain what that is and what that will serve in the future?
Yes. So, during our design of the, of the project and during some of the redesign that Mr. Shapiro talked about, we had to look into stormwater management for the site. And as a part of that, we did some initial infiltration testing and found that the site does not have a lot of optimal areas to infiltrate water. What that is, is putting water that falls and recharging it into the ground through infiltration. Basically, one of those areas where we were able to find some very adequate infiltration rates was that center spine. During the redesign, as Mr. Shapiro talked about, we enlarged that spine area to allow us to place some green infrastructure there. Essentially, that is a basin with, basin with different types of vegetation that'll serve as both a stormwater management facility and something for beautification of the site in general.
And that's, that, there's a boulevard, essentially, a street on each side, and that would provide also connectivity up to the Norristown State Hospital component if that was ever developed in the future, correct?
That is correct, yeah. The central boulevard will allow vehicular and pedestrian access.
And nothing that's in that stormwater facility would prohibit that future access to the remaining lands of the Norristown State Hospital?
That's correct, yes.
And we've talked about stormwater, we started this conversation, there are other stormwater measures throughout the site. Which slide would you like us to go to?
I do not have the number, but if you would go to the master plan prepared by Langen, it would be the first black and, second black and white plan. I think we are about number 12. Next one, keep going.
Next one?
One more? There we go.
Yep, okay. So, just for council, I mean, and so that they know, this is conceptual, so I guess at this stage, this is conceptual stormwater design. This is based on the infiltration rates we did receive from testing. This is no longer a guess. It's pretty close to where we originally had it and thought it was going to be, but we had to make some modifications, like you said. In your opinion, and based on your experience, this plan as constituted, would it adequately handle stormwater, and can you explain why?
Yes. So, as designed, we estimate that this plan will be able to provide for the stormwater requirements of both Norristown and of Pennsylvania as a whole. Basically, we are looking at dividing the site essentially into two. Half of the site will end up going directly into Stony Creek, and the other half will enter the borough's stormwater system, which will then also go to Stony Creek. As part of our design, we looked at the infiltration rates, as I mentioned earlier, to see where they were, opportunities to put basins and other stormwater management features where they would best be served, instead of trying to place them where they would just most aesthetically work. We were trying to work with Mr. Shapiro's firm to make them located as open spaces and as areas where the general populace can also go and realize some green space.
So, council understands, as the public knows, because stormwater is important for everybody, we've heard a lot of commentary about this, why is the stormwater breaking two ways? Can you explain for them?
Yes. Essentially, there is a slight ridge, so a somewhat of a high point going through the center of the site, a little bit to the west of where that boulevard we were previously talking about is. And that essentially breaks the site up into what we call two watersheds, essentially two areas where stormwater tends to collect, and what we use as measurement tools in stormwater management to perform all of our calculations.
So, the, the area to the left of that boulevard is going to go into the existing Norristown stormwater collection system, which ultimately discharges to the Stony Creek further down, correct?
That is correct, yeah. The western portion, the left side of the site, will go into the existing stormwater infrastructure, and we are currently evaluating the option to provide two new, a new discharge point directly to the Stony, to Stony Creek for the eastern portion of the site.
And when you say direct discharge, that doesn't mean the water just flows unabated and flows into the creek and floods everybody out. Can you explain what a direct discharge, what it means to be direct discharge, why is it allowed here because of the drainage area that it's in, and then also what's done to manage volume and rate as it is, quote-unquote, directly discharged into Stony Creek?
Yes. So, direct discharge is a somewhat of a stormwater management terminology. Essentially, that means that you are not required to control the rate of the stormwater that exits the site. In our case, we are controlling a lot of the rate of the stormwater that is on the site and leaves the site through the use of a large number of basins. As Mr. Shapiro mentioned, there's a very large basin over to the eastern side of the site. That'll help us hold the water for a longer period and release it over a longer period of time, controlling the rate down. We are also in what is called a conditional direct discharge district. That is essentially a stormwater management technique that, basically, you have a river that everybody has to follow these same requirements, in that you hold the stormwater onsite for a while and slowly release it over a period of hours and days. During larger storm events, this can be a little problematic, as it can tend to cause some flooding and backup in the river. For instance, the drainage area for Stony Creek has had some flooding, and we want to look to abate that. And as part of that, we are, the county, prepared what is called an Act 167 Plan for the management of the watershed of Stony Creek. And in that, it allows for direct discharge, so letting a lot of the stormwater rate go directly to the creek during larger storm events to get, get our water out of the site, out of the way, before all that water that's building up in the larger watershed can get there and cause a lot more flooding. It essentially helps to even out some of the flows.
So, essentially, while the rest of, everybody who's further away is holding their water and releasing it over time after it's all been collected, the idea in a direct discharge in that heavy event is to get the water out early, and so that it doesn't create problems and additional flooding when the other, the headwaters, as they're called, come down that creek or stream or river, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that's a, that's authorized by DEP, and in fact is even encouraged in these scenarios?
That's correct, yes. As I mentioned, it's part of what is called an Act 167 Plan, developed for, specifically for this watershed, for this river.
And in your opinion, with the stormwater as proposed and contemplated, but even as ultimately permitted and designed, and by say permitted, there will be, Norristown's professional staff, Panone will review that stormwater, the DEP and the Conservation District will review those stormwater plans as well. Will that plan as permitted improve, in your opinion, the condition of stormwater management in this, in this area and offer this site, as opposed to the undeveloped portion of the property?
So, we will likely have a positive impact. While we are a large site, we are not a large site in relation to the overall watershed that goes to Stony Creek. Stony Creek has a roughly 29-square-mile watershed. So, while we will be doing our part to help improve that, the watershed itself is significantly larger than we are able to directly impact.
And there are a series of both above-ground basins and underground detention areas shown in this plan, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And the underground detention is essentially is under parking areas, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And that's an acceptable form of stormwater management?
Yes, yeah. That's one of our types of stormwater management. We're proposing a number of above-ground basins and below-ground basins in combination to really let us utilize a large amount of the site and also put the stormwater a bit out of the way underground in areas that are not, that are used just for parking. We can use it as well for stormwater management.
And lastly, I just want, we talked on it with Ms. Vigilante, but about access, vehicular access. As I count the plan, I think there's 12 points of vehicular access proposed to this site, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And those would all have sidewalks accompanying them as well, which would give access for cars, both Stanbridge and Sterrier Streets, correct?
That is correct.
I have no other questions of Mr. Jordan at this time. Counsel?
Counsel, any questions? I see none.
I do have one more. You prepared Exhibit A8, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. That will conclude our testimony on the conceptual master plan. I would move for the admission of applicant Exhibits A1 through A9 with the removal of A7, which was a duplicate.
Counsel, is there a motion to mark all of the A Exhibits and the M Exhibits?
Amen.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, just in summation, counsel, you know, we've worked with you on an ordinance. We've assembled a great team. I think we've demonstrated tonight a consistency with the original vision. We did adapt the plan a little bit based on our stormwater testing, which we, which we all knew would happen. There would be some improvements and some changes. But I think this is, using a phrase, counsel has the benefit of its bargain with this plan. I believe we met the criteria set forth in, in, in the ordinance for a master plan approval, and I would ask that counsel, after due deliberation, give consideration to approving the master plan, and let us get started on the hard engineering work that remains ahead of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody here who would like to make public comments specifically about this information in this hearing? Please come up, say your name and address.
Actually, just name or, if you're in Norristown, one more, no, or business.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christopher Jackson. I'm a Norristown homeowner. So, I'm concerned that this project will have far greater consequences than what may have been anticipated. With new construction, we understand that their rise in property values are almost guaranteed, and with that comes higher property taxes. When taxes go up, longstanding homeowners, seniors on fixed incomes, and long-term renters often become the first... I'm sorry. Want me to start over?
He did not, he was just for comment.
Okay. I'll start over for you, I'm sorry. I'm concerned, I want to express a serious concern about this new development and the long-term impact it may have on the people who already live in the community. I'm concerned that this project will have far greater consequences than what may have been anticipated. With new construction, rising property values are almost guaranteed, and with that comes higher property taxes. When taxes go up, longstanding homeowners, seniors on fixed incomes, and long-term renters often become the first casualties. They are forced to move, or worse, lose their homes altogether. My question is this, how do, how do both the developers and the borough plan to prevent this from happening? Because if displacement is not being addressed directly, then this project is not revitalization, it's gentrification. In order to protect current residents, several safeguards must be clearly defined and guaranteed before any approval moves forward. Specifically, I want to know, will stronger tenant protections be implemented, such as limits on rent increase and legal support? Such as limits on rent increase and legal support for tenants at risk, at risk of eviction? Would there be a property tax or reduction program for long-term homeowners, homeowners who will be directly affected by rising assessments? Will affordable home repair grants be offered so residents can maintain and improve their homes without going into a debt or being pressured to sell? Will the borough consider establishing a community land trust or require, or require the developer to contribute to one, to ensure that a portion of housing remains permanently affordable for current and future residents? These protections are not optional. They are essential if the goal is to improve the neighborhood without displacing the very people who build it and keep it alive. All right, so before this project moves forward, we need clear, concrete answers and commitments to prevent displacement and safeguards the residents who call this community home.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Kovacic. I'm a homeowner in Norristown. K-O-V-A-C-I-C. I prepared a public comment.
Resident or business owner, it doesn't need to be a homeowner. So, I misspoke before. Just wanted to be clear.
I prepared a public comment, but I also have a lot of questions based on what we just heard here tonight. I'm wondering if it should be directed towards the developers or just stated for record?
Comments towards council, and if council wants to ask the developer those questions, they can ask the developer those questions. But that would be the proper way to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a lot of talk about the stormwater protection, stormwater basins, and the stormwater management for the Stony Creek. I'm wondering if there has been any assessment on the wildlife population, specifically the stock trout population, and how the stormwater runoff will affect them? I would like some clarification that no traffic plan has been made yet. They're waiting on conditional use approval. Does that mean that there's potential for new roads into and out of the neighborhood that aren't there already? There was a comment about, you know, the money going back into the school district, accounting for 104 students. I just want to make sure that's correct for some 700 living units that are proposed to go up. Also, with that traffic plan, is there a plan for public transit into and out of this neighborhood? Will that be a focus, as well as the parking spots available? And will there be walkways from Buttonwood Street into this neighborhood? And looking at the plan, not so much this picture, but the master plan, it seemed like there was a lot of focus on green spaces, which was good, but it seemed like it was all focused in the neighborhood itself, kind of with all the buildings on the outside. It looked like it was blocking off the rest of the neighborhoods that are surrounding this, this development. Counsel, you may remember me from our first meeting. I have returned to appear before you in hopes that you have put some thought and consideration into my emotional speech given during the original meeting, a speech where I argued feverishly against the redevelopment plan of the Norristown State Hospital. I have returned to speak because I've had time to reflect, and I've changed my tune on this matter. I realize that Pinnacle Realty already possesses this land, and I do recognize the potential posit- positives. However, I would like to present alternatives to this counsel to consider before you vote on the current master plan. And looking at the website, which had the outdated, the previous plan for this, it seems the developer plans to utilize as much space as possible to maximize occupancy, including mixed-use three-story apartment buildings directly adjacent to Sterjer Street between Stanbridge and Forest. This is unfortunate, as I believe it would mean the destruction of beautiful pine, oak, and willow trees that line the fence along Sterjer, older than Norristown itself, and some of the most beautiful specimens we have here in Montgomery County. I would ask the council to consider a 50-to-100-yard buffer zone between Sterjer and the apartment buildings along the entire side of the property. This will in effect, in effect, create a preservation zone for these trees and a greener space for the citizens of the preserve and the surrounding neighborhoods. To make up for this lost space, I would suggest rejecting the idea of the outdoor and indoor sports complexes. There are multiple baseball and athletic fields located a short walk away in East Norton Township Park, and King of Pressure and Country Hawk can already have massive infrastructure dedicated to these sporting complexes. While I believe there should be spaces for organized sports to flourish, I fear that space in the state hospital grounds would be wasted. So while I do not like the idea of this 400-some homes going up, let us instead preserve the space off Sterjer Street and use the area that a sports complex would go for the proposed houses and apartments. Lastly, while I understand that there are five proposed tech or flex spaces that would potentially bring in companies that would pay larger portions of local and school taxes, there's also an inherent risk that these spaces may sit dormant, unused, and vacant. Instead of large office spaces that will hardly do much for our local economy and citizens directly, let's pivot away from these office buildings towards more of the individual shops or rows of shops where local Norristown-based store owners can move in, sell delicious food, fresh brewed coffees, sell unique clothing, and provide services that would be invaluable to the local neighborhoods. Let's put an emphasis on making a walkable retail space akin to outdoor outlet stores where we can enjoy a variety of shopping and dining while simultaneously stimulating our local economy. In conclusion, counsel, I've come to the understanding that this project can be a benefit to Norristown, but I plead with you that we make this improvement while giving thought to our natural heritage and beauty. Please take a closer look at Pinnacle's master plan and think on how it can be improved and tailored to your existing and new citizens alike. Consider the lasting effects, positive and negative, to this proposed plan, and use your best judgment in making a decision that will affect your constituents for generations to come. Thank you.
Are there any other individuals who would like to make public comment on this project? Come to you next.
Hello, my name is Andrew Gaden, spelled G-E-D-N. I'm a Norristown resident. Personally, I have great concerns over the undefined tech flex office space, particularly given that Ordinance 2503 passed earlier this year explicitly defines that this land could be used for data centers. For those unaware, data centers are buildings that house servers for tech companies, typically they're very large facilities, but microcenters do exist and could fit in this potential space. These servers are active 24/7, and as such, demand a lot of electricity as well as water to keep them cool, and that puts a strain on the utility companies serving that area. And typically, that results in raising utility rates for all surrounding residents and buildings. It also leads to loud buzzing sound that can be very annoying since they're running constantly. Frankly, they are not in the best interest of the local community. I understand that what goes in these spaces is yet to be defined, it depends on what vendors are found, and that kind of occurs after the plan is approved, but frankly, there are aspects of this plan, given that it was kind of glossed over in this testimonial, the flex techs office space was rarely mentioned, were not heavily as detailed as the residential space. I am skeptical as to how this may shape out once the plan is implemented and construction occurs. As such, I ask the council to reject the proposal as it stands today, under the condition that this space cannot be used for data centers, micro or otherwise. You know, frankly, there's a lot of, as was suggested, a lot of opportunities to use this space. I think office space is fine, I think mixed-use retail would be great. My biggest concern is preventing data centers from being introduced into our community. Thank you.
Ms. Colbra, did you have your hand up?
Actually, I'm on mine.
Okay. Would anybody else like to make a public comment?
My name is Joan Mork. I live in the 1400 block of Stanbridge Street, and my concern is with our street, and I wasn't here to hear everything tonight, but my concern is with that being a dead-end street, there's only one way in, one way out, and if they're going to be coming up, my house is directly across the street. My neighborhood is probably the most impacted as far as being the closest to this development. And my concern is that if there's going to be people driving up there every day going to work in the buildings that are going to be built there, I'm hoping that they can maybe have like infraroads that'll be able to stay off of our, stay off of Stanbridge Street and just be able to get into the, like down below where the houses are on Stanbridge. That was it. Thank you.
Is there any other, anybody else who would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none.
I...
Yes, I was going to ask if you would like to provide response to any of the above public comment. What I wrote down includes the impact on neighboring residents on property taxes and finances, the environmental impact on wildlife, stormwater, and preserving the older trees on the property, the calculation of the number of students, use of flex office space, whether you would be willing to remove the use of a data center from the flex office space, and the dead-end street traffic.
I'll do my best to get to all of them. I'll kind of do it maybe in a little bit of reverse order. The area that's here, that's the tech flex space. If counsel remembers, when we first proposed this plan, these are all proposed as one-story buildings, they're placeholders for what we contemplate. There is a lot of need for flex industrial space for, you have a metal fabrication shop, you have a welder shop, you have an electrician who has a business that lives in Norristown, they need better, newer space with gantry cranes and things like that to use. This space is really designed for that. We've had everything from that type of user approach us to, without saying names, hospital-type, surgery center-type of facilities that would bring other types of jobs. The data center component that's in the ordinance, I can tell you categorically, if you were to call PICO and ask them, could they serve a data center at the site, the answer would be no unless it was about something on the order of a house worth of electricity. They don't have, Norristown does not have the high-tensioned infrastructure grid, namely 69 KVA lines, 138 KVA lines, 230 KVA lines, and 500 KVA, KVA, that, lines, which would normally service data centers throughout the region. The reason for that is they need higher voltage to bring that in.
So...
The substation that's here is inadequate to provide a substation that would be needed to do that. This substation really is designed as a placeholder for PICO, and they need to upgrade their substation facilities, not only for this site, but for the residential sites in the area as their network grows. This is not...
If we were to remove, if we were to place a condition that there can't be a data center there as part of your approval, would you be willing to accept that?
I would be willing to accept that with the one proviso that if it was a data center ancillary to another primary use, so for example, a hospital moved in and had a small data center as part of their hospital use to maintain their records or...
For their own network.
Or their research, but it has to be, it would have to be an accessory use rather than a primary use. There was a lot of talk when this was done about, could this site be a data center? It just doesn't work. So that was in the ordinance left over, but really is to be that sort of accessory use, not a primary use on the site. Plus, most data centers require two, you know, 100 or 200 feet separation away from residential uses. By the time you put all that restriction in, there would be nothing left really to develop, in my opinion. Switching over, there was questions about whether this could be commercial space, there is retail and commercial space proposed here. These buildings have ground floor retail, so coffee shops, daycare centers, restaurants are all proposed. Part of the woo-nor is a wider sidewalk to allow for outdoor seating in good weather. The grocery store has inline, an inline retail component, and these retail pads could be fast food, but they could be banks or other types of retail. They could be standalone stores. We just have to make the traffic work with that, so that's going to be planned out. But there is a component here to invite people to come here and stay. We've talked with everything I said, from restaurants, both local and outside the area, to other uses that are allowed under the ordinance. Things like thrift shops are not allowed, nail salons, that type of thing, small, but like bodega-type of stores are not permitted in that, this zoning classification. In terms of trees, we are going to try to harvest some of the trees that we can and relocate them as part of the site. We have to have an arborist identify which of those can be, some of the trees, while they appear healthy, are not. I do recognize the request to put a buffer here of about 100 to 300 yards, and just, 50 to 100 yards, that's the length of a football field, there would be a substantial reduction in this loss yield, and this would shift over. Part of the component of this plan was job creation in Norristown, so if we do something like that, we're sacrificing it over here, plus you're moving people away, you're changing the whole character of this entrance. It is the only building that hasn't facing edge towards Stanbridge Street. These, all these houses face the sidewalk the way Norristown would. These can't mainly because of the deck scenarios, but the idea is to have a residentially-fronted community. In addition, everyone talks about impervious and the preservation of open space and animals. Up until a few years ago, this site was covered by dilapidated buildings that were owned by the Commonwealth, they've since been knocked down. So the image you have of the site today is very different than what it was five or six years ago. So this isn't like native habitat, this wasn't undisturbed ground, this is ground that had been disturbed and used for a very long period of time. And I think what we've tried to do is maintain connective green corridors, and you have one of the largest state parks in the area next to you, and there's no proposed development. Hopefully, our connection with the Liberty Bell Trail provides additional access to that area. All right, that's as many I can remember off the first part of the list.
I think that answered a couple. I also have left, if you'd like to add anything to the question about property taxes and impact on property values for neighboring residents?
Yes, I mean, there is, the law for better or worse outlines the assessments that a municipality can impose upon a developer, and that no developer are responsible for every theoretical impact happening. As we said to counsel, this is not an affordably-priced, affordably-priced product, it's an attainably-priced product that we intend to build here. This is not $700,000 townhouses, we intend, at least in today's standards, try to start in the threes, be in the fours, slightly below where Bridgeport was. In terms of impact on neighboring values, that's very much a decision of counsel, and there's a lot of other things that go into municipal taxes. If you have more tax revenue, you have a net fiscal benefit here, one could surmise that you could do things to offset other taxes. The reality is, is payroll and health benefits expand every year, rental subsidy programs and outreach and municipal services expand in cost. If you just follow normal price increases of 3%, every year, your budget goes up. There is no one developer that can fix that issue. I would say it would be unfair for you to try to collect all that back from this, if you could even tie that provision out. By creating housing that's attainably-priced and putting over $50 million in the local economy, you will have local businesses that are paying more, more business tax, you will raise property values for those businesses as well. Hopefully, there are people in Norristown that can benefit from that. But the decision about how you abate taxes and who you abate them for is solely within the realm of this council and future councils, and is really not the responsibility or the obligation of the developer. Our responsibility is to build a good product that produces a positive tax revenue and that helps raise local businesses, that is the best we can do to contribute our part. In terms of, there was a question about, also related to taxes...
I have written down, oh, the calculation about the number of students?
Oh, students, that's correct. So right, there is 104 students proposed in 700 units, the, add the 700 units includes one- and two-bedroom townhouses, one- and two-bedroom apartments, mostly some studios as well, there's also townhouses. Both of those products generally, and this always gets people upset, are beginning-of-life and end-of-life sort of product. When you're, when you have a family unit, you tend to look for spaces with yards and things like that. You're a young professional, you come out of school, you're not moving into a single-family home with a quarter-acre lot, you're moving into an apartment, and then from there, you're going to a townhouse, and maybe you start your family, and then you move out to another, another home. And then end-of-life people who are moving out of their single-family homes, back into townhouses and back into apartments. So they're, those are both transitional housing. The study that Mr. Hetzel talked about are statistics, are statistics that are accepted nationally as the benchmark for how students are calculated based on the housing product and type that we have. So that number of 104 is actually very consistent, we have roughly 600-something total units over in Bridgeport, and that number was 103. So we're about in the same range. And then again, that's in our fiscal calculation, we assumed all those children are going to Norristown School District, and we showed the net fiscal benefit in spite of that total. We all know, based on experience, that a percentage of those students will go to private school or Catholic school or non-public schools or be homeschooled. So again, we took the most conservative approach for counsel. Could there in a year be 110 school-age students entering? Yes. And remember, it's not total children, it's school-age children, so it's K through 12. So the fact that somebody has, there's 40 babies and 40 toddlers that are running around the neighborhood that we didn't account for, is perfectly acceptable in that statistical analysis. We know that, but we know that the 40 12th graders and 11th graders are going to move on, and the 43-year-olds and 2-year-olds are going to move up and take their slots. So that's how, that's how those computations work. Any other questions?
And I know that the last question was about the traffic in the surrounding area, and I know that Stanbridge Street is not yours and that the surrounding roads are ours, not yours. So I'd say personally, I'd love to see our section of Stanbridge Street connect to the east Norton side of Stanbridge Street, I think that that would be a nice through road there, but there was a question within that comment about are there other access roads and access points, and I can see them on your map, so maybe you could speak to those.
Sure. There are various access points, all that connect to Stanbridge. We can look at making an interconnection to one of the internal streets as well. Depending on who this user is and what this, all the uses will be, we'll work with counsel on that. We're sensitive to the fact that there could, that there are homes along Stanbridge Street up in this section, this is more, the more industrial component to it. So we certainly will count for that and look for that, once we have that user or users identified, and we would accept that as a condition, that if necessary, we would accept an internal street connection in order to do that, to help mitigate some of this. There's a couple of spots we can try to do that. And I think importantly for counsel, you know, when I talked about the reduction in yield, the reduction yield was dictated by a better plan. Houses with decks, a little more open space, a little more spread out. This was never about maximizing the number of units that could be put into any one defined box. This was about giving Norristown the plan that you thought you bargained for, and us honoring that obligation. And this plan will be refined, there will, things will move around, we'll probably lose a couple more units as we come along, but our commitment to you is to make this the best plan, and I think we've lived up to that responsibility so far, and will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can you just explain to counsel and the public, this is, this is not the end of the road here for you. Can you explain what other kind of approvals you'll need from this body and other bodies?
So, you know, as with any land development plan, especially a major land development plan like this, we will now prepare, if counsel votes to approve this use, preliminary plans. The preliminary plan submission is defined by the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code, which will be filed by, followed by a final plan submission. But as part of that, there are other permits that have, and things that have to happen. There's also other reviews by counsel. So you'll, we'll submit that package, you and your engineers and your professional staff, your attorneys will review those plans. Give us comments, we go back and review them, so that's an iterative process. The County Conservation District will help review the stormwater plans. There will be sewage planning modules, which will be reviewed by DEP. Traffic will be reviewed by Norristown, unless we propose a traffic light somewhere, then PennDOT sticks their nose into that part of the process no matter what, because whether you believe it or not, PennDOT has jurisdiction over every single traffic light in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and every traffic light you permit has to be permitted by, approved by PennDOT. So we have to look at that. If you're going to do segment coordination, there's other things we have to coordinate with, right? So that's another standard, so we've got, you know, we've already done our environmental, we've done, we've done our wetlands delineations, we've done all those types of clearances, so we know all the... the, any of the endangered species, there isn't any that we have to technically account for in this. And then after we do all of that, we'll get what's called for me of a conditional preliminary plan approval. And that means there'll be a preliminary plan with conditions that we have to meet, including getting final plan, getting final permits issued for sewer, for, we have to work with PA American in order to get water connection. We know that we have to upgrade the water line coming across the creek because it will probably have to be bored under the creek, so we'll need a permit for that. There could be some other federal agency permits that we need. If everything goes smoothly and we're back before you probably four or five times during that process, you're probably looking at an 18 month window, which is really pretty good. If it's as good as our review letter with your engineer would be, will be in that timeframe. 20 to 24 months is probably more realistic. And the plan has to be phased. So as I said to council, when we start at this process, if we had a user who came in and said, hey, it's a great job center, it's a great job creator, and we want to start in that industrial, that industrial flex area first, we're going to do that. And then we're going to change the phasing on that plan and come back to you and do what we have to do. So, you know, there's a whole bunch of things, but I would say we're going to be at least before this council and your planning commission and your, your design review committee several more times, all of which are opportunities for public input and we encourage that. We think we're pretty good at what we do, but again, there's people who have perspective. We know that we want to attract certain users, like a grocery store, after this condition use, we want to get started on that. Again, you know, because there's opportunities when you can grab those and when you can't. So that's something we have to work on. As to the comment, there was a comment made about vacant space. The death knell of every developer is vacant space. No builder goes into anything designing a product to encourage vacancy or what they call blackout spaces, dark, dark spaces, things like that. Everything we're doing here is to generate, excuse me, traffic, foot traffic, pedestrian traffic, residential traffic that drives the economy. And so if, and you have my commitment, if doing this that provides 30 spaces for local contractors that can work here and helps create jobs and that's the best use, that's what we're going to propose to you. If someone comes in and says, hey, XYZ Hospital Group or Surgical Group wants to come here, XYZ University wants to come in and put a campus here, we're going to talk to you about that because there's implications for that. Is that not only the best use for us, but is it the best use for the borough, the municipality? So those are the things that I think are critical and this is very much a partnership. We want your feedback and those of your professionals, but we will be back before you many times.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
So there would be, so let me explain the process going forward. So if council wants to this evening, they can close this public hearing. Then we have 45 days to issue a written decision. We can include that proposed condition, council would have an opportunity to review it and then we would come out and vote for that.
Counsel, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will return back to the regular order of our agenda. With public comment up next.
Cynthia Colbreth.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, council members, and thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I come before you tonight with heartfelt pride to present, to present another visionary idea for expanding the vision in Narstown Walk of Fame. The creation of a Narstown Walk of Fame, a permanent walkway honoring other notable Norristonians who have made remarkable contributions to history, sports, arts, public service and beyond. Just as Hollywood celebrates its legends, Narstown can celebrate our own stars right here at home. Imagine a beautifully paved walkway, perhaps in front of the courthouse or throughout the park, with shining stars engraved with the names of Narstown's famous, most distinguished notables, Maria Bello, Steve Modo, Peter Boyle, Al Cantello, Josh Colbreth, Tommy Lasorda, Mike Piazza, Jerry Sminelli, Kelly Stewart, and of course Jimmy Smith, our world-class jazz innovator. This walkway will become a symbol of pride and cultural revival, an attraction that connects generations and inspires future leaders, athletes and artists to continue Narstown's legacy of excellence. On November 14, I contacted Cellar and Jewelry Architecture located at 420 DeKalb Street to share this idea. The person I spoke with expressed they are open to help with crafting the visioning of the project by drawing something up as an exhibit to present to the municipality council and to discuss the potential designation of a site. Creating a Narstown Walk of Fame are lasting symbols that tell the world, Narstown remembers its heroes and we celebrate their legacy with pride. Let us make this happen together. Thank you, Cynthia Colbreth.
Olivia Brady.
Good evening, counsel. Olivia Brady, Stamford Street. I'm just here to, before you tonight, to thank the Narstown Police Department for the recovery of my son's pickup truck, which was stolen from right outside of our house. It was not noticed that it was stolen for a while because he has a work pickup truck and it wasn't until a street cleaning day and he had to move it that he realized it wasn't there. Anyway, we contacted the police department first to find out if it was towed and second of all, once it was, once it was decided that it was stolen, to file a police report. So about a week to 10 days later, the police did leave a message with him. He was actually out of town, left a message with him that, to say that it was recovered and it was at a tow facility. So I just wanted to thank the police department and also apologize to them for my son's behavior. He was quite angry at the fact that his truck was stolen and I think he didn't treat the police in the respect that they deserved. So at any rate, but I did want to thank them for recovering the vehicle and doing everything they can to let him, give him the necessary paperwork to get it from the tow place. Thank you.
Tiffany Todd.
I just wanted to revisit the housing shelter, the proposed transitional shelter at 1430 DeKalb. I was just wondering, I haven't heard anything about it. So I started going back through my notes and in May, Commissioner Jamila Winder had stated that the county is aiming to open it at the beginning of 2026 and we're here in November of 2025. So I just haven't heard anything about it. There's an awful lot of activity going on at the Human Services Building for the past couple of weeks. I have no idea if it's in relation to that. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't really matter. It just got me too, wondering what is the status of it? Has it been fully approved? Is it going in? Was there any upcoming council votes on it? So I was just wondering what the status was on it. Thank you very much.
Denise Gerta.
I'm here today to just talk about these two incidents that happened in our community this, last week and this week. So I, first I want to start, last time when I came here with my community members, everybody was wondering why, because the message wasn't clear enough. But at that time, they asked me too, if they want to talk to someone about the incidents that happened in the community and said, that was the place go. Because that day, it was 11th November 5th, the 5th, we saw the incident where the police was interacting with ICE on Brown and Pine Street. And today, this morning, and we saw the police officer interacting with ICE and Barbados and Marshall and ADI and Barbados. So these two incidents back, you know, like this transported me to the back in history, like 2013, when that's happened in Norristown every single day, when the police was interacting every single day, with that familiarity, like shaking hands, smiling and, you know, they come and talk. And when we, I was part of the movement at that time, approaching to the police, they start fighting against us. So now I can see this again. So I'm here today because no one of the community members want to stand and come here today. They stayed refusing, they are crying, they are really emotional, really bad. So I want to ask the new chief of police and all of you, please, it's a demand to investigate this because it's not fair for the community. I don't want to see in this 2013 back in 25. I sent the videos and report when that happened to Mr. Leiner. I sent the videos, that is not posting out there because we keep it confidential. We don't want to break this relationship with the police department that we already built for years. So please, this, I tell you, this is really hard. I listen, my community members call me and crying and recording videos and sending the videos to Mr. Leiner and he even muttered to say, hey Denise, I got it. Or something like that, it really pissed me off. So I have these pictures, I can show you all these pictures showing how familiar, how they interact each other. It's not just they come because they call 911. It's this picture showing shaking hands, say hi. So we can see all of officer there. And this morning, this in our corner here, you can see how, you know, they're shaking hands and the other one is.
Thank you Denise. Can I have those copies or will you send them, be able to send them to me? I would just like to reiterate, our policy on I still stands, I will look at these, I promise. The incident today was related to an individual with a warrant out for felony aggravated assault. So that's the incident today, but I will.
Well, they take three.
Look at these and our policy definitely still stands.
Thank you.
Let's see. Steve Cavocchio?
Hi, good evening. I am a lead from Montgomery County Community Watch. I've been watching since the end of May, ICE ravaged Montgomery County and a lot in this town, in Narstown. And it's getting worse day by day. They are now coming to pick up construction workers and painters and store clerks with five to seven vehicles, 10 agents, weapons. And whether or not Narstown Police Department is working with ICE or not, the community is seeing your officers with ICE. Today, your community saw the officers with ICE. On Friday, they were behind this building. Regardless of if there was a warrant for a person today, they took collateral today. They took someone without any kind of criminal history, with your officers. I don't know what the solution is because I understand that we're at a precipice where we don't know what to do because we have federal agents with, that are able to do with what usually have jurisdiction over municipal. But these federal agents are breaking windows. They're lying. They're saying that they are the police to people. They're making up stuff to get people. They're breaking the constitution and they're breaking the law and it's only going to get worse. The crisis that's happening in Narstown may turn into a worse crisis, a death. Or what's happening in Chicago and Charlotte could happen here. We have to make sure that we are doing everything to be ahead of it and not just react. I know it's difficult, but we have to be creative and collaborative and do something. Over 100 people are gone. Families ripped apart, cruelly unjust, treated like animals, chased. People aren't, they're not criminals. Yes, there's some that have had criminal histories, but most of the histories we see, DUIs. There was a man that was locked up for a domestic incident. He was never found of a crime, but they had his address, so they came and got him. They're not looking for criminals. They're looking for anybody that they have an address for, period. Whether the address is in a criminal history somewhere, where they spent a weekend in the prison, or it's in their immigration case records, just because they know where they are because they have immigration case. This injustice in this country is happening in Narstown, not somewhere else, every day. Thank you.
Andrew Geeter? Andrew Geeter? Jane Peekall?
Jane Peekall, I'm a community member, Buttonwood Street. So yes, on November 5th, at the intersection of Brown and Pine Street, I happened upon the scene of about five ICE agents who had smashed out both windows of a work van. I know it was a work van because it had ladders on it. Two Norristown cops were on the scene. The one officer that I talked to said they were called there because of a car accident. When I asked why, this officer was talking to the ICE agent, he asked me, and I have this on film, he asked me, why shouldn't I be talking to the ICE, to the agent, to the federal agent, whatever? So my question is, does he not know about the policy of non-cooperation with federal ICE agents by our municipal police force? I understand we had a stretch of time without a chief, but it is, but is the communication and the understanding of that policy that poor throughout the force? And then I want to point out the complete impotence of our own law enforcement in the face of these federal thugs. Are you as powerless as you claim to be or have you just not tried to use your power? When ICE did, did the raid at the Hegante supermarket in West Norton, I called that police department asking what they knew, how many people were taken, where were they taken? The cops claimed the feds don't have to tell them anything. So now back to the 11-5 incident. You aren't checking that these people are who they say they are? They could be cartel members, members taking people for ransom money. You literally don't know, they could be thieves. It's a surreal scene to see these federal agents, I guess you can call them agents, they probably watched a half hour training video. They have literally totaled someone's car and disappeared them and the cops are there. They're right there like, well, it's just a state sponsored kidnapping, nothing we can do, no crime here to investigate, no process and procedure to follow, complete impotence, no report to write. I think it's worth noting that the Fraternal Order of Police endorsed Trump in 2024, even after 140 law enforcement officers were injured on January 6th. And all those insurrectionists were pardoned. So it may be too much to expect that local law enforcement to stand up to the Trump administration now, but you could. If you believe the Fourth Amendment should be adhered to, then stand up for that. If you don't want all these ICE goons zipping around Norristown driving recklessly, impersonating police officers, traveling on our rights, making a mockery of public safety, then get your act together and at least say something or figure out what your policy and procedures are and make sure all the officers know and understand them and make sure the public's communicated with. While ICE's actions are abhorrent, I do believe that ICE agents will be on their better behavior if less, and less likely to be.
Thank you.
Matthew, is it Green? Clear, Green?
Good evening, council members. My name is Matthew Green. I'm here today to ask for a sponsorship from the council to help with the traveling football team. I go to Blackson Middle School where I currently have a 4.0 grade point average, but it is important that I participate. I have been working hard with my diagnosis. I have ADHD and what helps me the most is playing football. So today I stand here to expert donations and/or support to be able to travel and go to Naples, Florida this year, which is a once in a lifetime opportunity.
How much do you need?
How much do you need?
Yes.
How much would you need?
So, so far, they were asking like a $500 for just him, just for him to play, but then he also needs room and board and all that stuff to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Robinson?
I don't know what you believe in, and I won't try to test that, but I literally was sitting here thinking like, I have to get rid of some of this discretionary funds, and there was something else that I wanted to do that fell through, so I said, really, God, I really hope that you could help me figure out what to do that can make the most impact, and I was really running that through my brain earlier, and then you stand up here. So you, sorry, you got my $1,000 commitment, thank you so much.
Well, young man, looks like you're going to have a great time in Florida. Wish you good luck in that game.
I'm back. So, my name is Chris Jackson, and I was last here on 10/21, when I made it absolutely clear that there is an excessive and unacceptable amount of dumping occurring behind my property. First, I want to acknowledge that members of Public Works did come out to look at the situation and take pictures. However, since that visit, nothing has happened, no action, no follow-up, no progress. I have not received a single update or a piece of correspondence regarding the status of this issue. I've gone through every proper channel to have this resolved, yet the property behind us is still filled with trash. This has been ongoing for far too long, and the lack of action is beyond frustrating. I need someone to explain what has been done since our last meeting, and what the actual procedure is to get anything accomplished. I also need to know which one of you are in, which one of you guys are in charge of the ward that I live in. At that meeting, I also made it clear that my very first outreach to the borough personnel, specifically Amarin Singh, code enforcer at the time, was back in April of 2023. Since then, I have sent multiple emails, made countless phone calls, and spoken directly with Mr. Singh and others in person, still absolutely nothing has changed. This is exactly what the broken windows theory warns about, when visible signs of neglect, like trash debris and abandoned property are left unaddressed, it signals that no one cares, and the disorder only escalates. The ongoing dumping behind my home is a direct example of that. I hope you guys understand that. At this point, I need real answers, not excuses, I feel completely ignored, and it's clear that my concerns have been pushed aside. This entire situation is embarrassing and absolutely unacceptable, and I hold you all accountable for it, because it's been three years I have been asking for the trash to be removed, and nobody has done anything. I paid too much money in taxes, I worked too hard to look out my window and see trash sitting on the, in the neighboring lot. It's unacceptable, it is unacceptable, it's been three years. What are my taxes I was going to?
Chris, can you remind me your, excuse me, can you remind me your address again?
510 Thomas Circle, and it's on the record from the last time I spoke, 10/21. Somebody, please do something about it, stop band-aiding the situation.
Yvonne Platts?
Good evening, council and all, I am actually standing in for my friend and comrade Heather Lewis. Good evening. I'd like to put on record that I sent an email to the administrator, the solicitor, and all of council regarding the illegal vote and termination of Public Works Director Thomas Bendabo. Councilwoman Natalie Coulson, at her town hall meeting on Wednesday, November the 12th, she informed the public that she indeed voted to terminate Thomas in executive session meeting. I have since gotten an email response at the request of Council President Rebecca Smith and Administrator Leitner from Sean McKenney that they did not vote, and Thomas was given the option to resign. This is a stark contrast to what Councilwoman Coulson stated in her direct video-recorded response to the question. It seems to me that there are some untruths being told in her attempt to cover up this illegal action, and if this is found to be the case, I would expect swift disciplinary action taken place, namely, the removal of Rebecca Smith, Natalie Coulson, Rashad Bates, Madeira Robertson, the elected officials that voted, and Leonard Leitner, the person who carried out the illegal action, all of whom should know better. Thank you. Heather Lewis.
Mr. Solicitor, do you mind responding to that one?
Sure, hold on a second, let me pull up, I'll read the email that I forwarded to. And this refers to the email that was just raised during public comment. Ms. Lewis, I've been asked to respond to this email by President Smith and Municipal Administrator Leitner. On November 5th, 2025, Norristown Council held an executive session to discuss a personnel matter. This is pursuant to Section 708 of the Sunshine Act, and that permits personnel matters to be discussed in executive session. After conferring with my law firm colleague Patrick Hitchens, I was not present at this executive session, and Labor Counsel George Vogely, I was told that specific municipal employee's performance was discussed, and the administrator received authorization after polling council. So in an executive session, an opinion, individual opinions, it's permitted by law, can be asked by the administrator to take an action, to tend that employee, that an employee a chance to resign in lieu of termination. It was also relayed by council that for the employee to be terminated, it would need to occur at a public meeting pursuant to the Norristown Charter. No public or private vote has been taken in relation to this employee, and he or she remains employed by the municipality. That's Sean, that refers to the email I sent this afternoon.
Madam Secretary, is there any other public comment?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have appointments, Resolution Number 25-62, the appointment of members to various boards, committees, and authorities. Mr. Leitner?
Yes, Council, you have before you a list of recommendations to approve members to appointed boards and commissions.
Council, do you have any questions on Resolution 25-62?
I do. The question I have is Terrence requested, talk to me if you come here, just to make sure I'm clear, to be on, was it Waste Authority? So I'm wondering why he's not even up for a vote for Waste Authority?
I can begin to answer that. As you remember, several months ago, there was a motion to make various appointments, and many of the individuals tonight are being considered, because they were not considered and tabled at that time. There's been follow-up a couple times to come to some level of consensus. Throughout history, it is not uncommon, in fact, the application lists alternatives for individuals if there is more applications for a seat than are open, to receive a second or third choice. In this case, there were four interested people for two vacant Stormwater or Waste Water Authority seats, so a significant amount of conversation has happened since then. He is not the only person on this agenda who is not getting their first choice at committee appointment. I have talked to Mr. Barnes, and also, he has emailed all of council to make clear that yes, that was his first choice, but if there is somewhere else where he could do good, then so be it. And if he could serve on any other committee, he will accept Stormwater over his then second place choice of recreation.
Okay, for transparency, that's not 100% accurate. He did state that he wants to be on Waste Authority, and you were asking him if he would do something else, but he kept saying that was his preference, and you kept asking him to go somewhere else, so he said, look, I want to help Narstown, I just want to be clear. So I'm curious, I take it that you chose him to go over to Stormwater, because I don't even remember seeing us like saying we should pick him here or there. Why did he not get chosen for that position, but let's say for example Brad did? What was the qualifications, because he's a lawyer, what qualifications did Brad have that he didn't get the choice, his first choice that he wanted?
I don't believe that Mr. Barnes is in fact a lawyer, he has went to law school, so just a point of clarification there.
He is a lawyer, actually. He actually is.
I'm just trying to get some.
Multiple council members weighed in on this, in fact, every council member at this table was given multiple opportunities to weigh in on this. In my conversations, the outlay of appointments we have here is the one that I could receive the most people who are in favor of. You will note that there are council members who are not getting their first choice.
I might ask, I'm saying, why did you pick Brad over Terrence? That was my question.
I would say I did not pick him, I sent out to council. For information, I would also say that I've talked into Mr. Barnes a number of times, I suggested Stormwater after suggesting a multitude of other committees that have lots of vacancies, but I would say Stormwater in particular, because they're both water authorities, the operations are similar to each other. There's currently a lawyer on the Sewer Authority, there is not currently a lawyer sitting on Stormwater Authority. Stormwater Authority currently has a vacancy, and I will be resigning at the end of my council term in January, and so there will be multiple vacancies, and after the last several meetings, if I was not in attendance, there would not have been a quorum, and business of the Stormwater Authority could not continue. So that was the line of thought there.
Okay, great, just once again, you still picked it, because you didn't, okay, did any other council person express their desire for him not to be on that board, to be on a different board?
Yes, actually, me and Terrence Barnes had a conversation about two months ago, we had dinner together, and I actually offered him to be on the planning commission because there was a lot of vacancies there, we needed some, so, but that wasn't one of his choices on there, but Stormwater was, or I forget which authority was. So I also talked to him about something different, because I saw a need there, and I was on the planning commission once before, back before I was on council, so I did offer him to hop to join the planning commission as well.
Okay, I appreciate, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, I spoke to him, he did state previously that he wanted to be on Sewer, but he was requested to be on Stormwater.
Is there a way we can nominate, like nominate him for Sewer too, and we just, like whoever wins, wins? I mean, just to give the man opportunity for his first choice. He is a resident of Narstown versus, nothing against Brad, but he's a business owner, he's not actually a resident of Narstown. I'd rather, me personally, I'd rather give preferences to residents of Narstown on what committees they want to be on.
So, we could do this two ways, I can call for a motion for the resolution as is, if that fails, you can call for a motion on the resolution as amended.
Well, can we do the amended first, or we have to do it that way first? Is there a rule that says we have to do it that way first? I'm just, because to be perfectly honest, I don't want us up here, not as a unit, picking people, because I know I didn't have a say so on this, because I sent you a, I know I sent out an email you didn't respond to.
I think you've had multiple chances to provide feedback.
I did, and you didn't respond. What you said, no, is the truth. Like, we talked about, you brought up transparency before here in front of everybody, I'm just trying to be transparent. I spoke to the gentleman, his email was to effect that he really wanted this to be his first choice, and he was kind of being pushed over. And also, like you said, we have multiple vacancies, we need to advertise that. It's not even on the website, people can't apply for something they can't see. I pushed that out there as well, and I didn't get a response either on that. So we, as a council, need to make sure we advertise, even if we just put the stuff out here so people can pick it, and let people know, like, because how can you apply for something you can't see?
Council.
Well, I'll just leave it up to the rest of the council, they all can decide what you want.
I have here, Mr. Barnes, original application 12-5-2024, asking to be on the HRC. And I have another application here from Mr. Barnes on July 8th, 2025, requesting to just be a part. Then I have another email here from Mr. Barnes on 7/16/2025, just to follow up on that Stormwater, Stormwater Authority application. I look forward from, look forward to hearing from you. So, 7/16/2025, Mr. Barnes requested Stormwater Authority.
Is your purpose for stating that, that our last couple conversations negate that? Because he expressed that to me and other council people as his first choice, I actually saw his application as well. So I guess your statement is to influence that, he didn't necessarily want to be on Waste.
My statement is that Mr. Barnes has been applying since December 5th, and every application has been forwarded on his request to be a part of something. That's my statement.
I asked you for pointed clarity, what is the point you're trying to prove with that statement?
I don't think I need to prove a point, it's the statement.
The last email we received from him was October 11th, 2025, in regards to him selecting the Sewer Authority as his first choice, and he made it very clear that's his first choice. It was an extensive paragraph that he elaborated on why he is not in that pool to be selected for such a committee, and that's the final say that I had from him, and also from my previous conversations as well, that's the conversation I had with him as well. And I know previously, when we were, when this came across our table, when it came to Sewage Authority, we made, someone made a statement in regards to it only being a few people that applied for it, and it did not include Terrence Barnes, when he made it clear verbally, in person, and then also through email, that that is one of his intended, or his first intended choice.
What I'm trying not to avoid, it seems like we are intentionally not trying to put him on that board, based on what he said, and like, once again, we keep bringing up transparency, and we're, like I said, he's a resident, over, we love our business people, but I would rather give preference to the people actually live here, so.
We can start with your amended motion first, if you would like. Oh, Council VP Bates, did you have something to say there?
Just a little bit, so, I get where you guys are coming from, because I feel you on that, so, when I was going, I wasn't even going for the planning commission when I first tried to help out in Narstown, I said, hey, I want to go for recreation, and the vice president and the president at the time, Sonia Sanders and Derek Perry, came to me and said, hey, I understand you want to fill this position, but we feel as though you can do better somewhere else. And I'm pretty sure part of the charter is, when we appoint people to a position, it's at our discretion of what we think is best for everyone. So as Rebecca has stated, she said that she is going to be resigning, and there will be two spots open, we have a lot of problems with filling committees as is, so having him fill a spot there, knowing that there will be a vacant spot in the future, makes sense for her to do that. And then what Leonard is saying over here is that Terrence is, he wants to help, he wanted to be on the recreation, he wanted to be on the Stormwater, and his email does clearly state, which I had to look at earlier today, was that his first choice was the Sewer Authority, but if for any reason, whatever, he had to go somewhere else, he was okay with that, and he was fine with just helping out in Narstown. That's all I wanted to say there.
When you say we, what does that represent? Because like I said, did four people state that they should put him over there?
I think so in the emails, because we had an email that said, vote for everyone, BCC.
No, I mean plates, you said we could put someone somewhere, did four people want to put him over there, or was that?
We are going to take that vote tonight.
So it wasn't like that, so it was.
Just finish my.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I got cut off twice.
Yeah, my bad.
The difference between us putting somewhere, was he, was that put in front of us to vote on for him to be there, or did we suggest as a group, hey, dispossess for us if we put him over there? There's two different things.
Okay, so yeah, so what you're saying is, when it came to my, came to me in the email, it was.
We didn't have a discussion.
No, no, no.
That's what I'm saying, he was placed there, then you voted on.
I did ask for thoughts, and nobody suggested an alternate, except his first choice, nobody suggested an alternate committee except that. I did personally talk to Mr. Barnes about planning commission, zoning, and then we landed around Stormwater. But again, every conversation I've had with him has included that he is looking to help, and he would happily, I'm going to quote his email, happily go where I can do good.
Read the whole email, because when I read the email, it seemed like you were pushing him over there. That's why I'm making, listen, how we want to do this, we just have a difference, I spoke to the man yesterday, other council people spoke, and so, I just don't want to see, like, because for example, have you talked to Brad about being on Stormwater?
Would you like, so?
But you see what I'm saying? I don't want to seem like we're handpicking where people are going, and then that, that just. And then that, that's not being transparent. I don't want people to say we alter their motives and things of that nature. Because those boards deal with contracts and things of that nature.
So yes, you are correct, but like I said, I'm pretty sure in the charter it says we are able to pick and choose where we put people as long as they apply. But, so would you, I guess when you make the motion, are you trying, you want to just put Terrence on Sewer and then put Brad in Stormwater? Am I saying that correctly? We just switch them around?
Me personally, I'd rather give preference to a resident.
I agree with that.
And if Brad still, he can still help over, over there. I don't, it just seems like he's constantly being pushed.
I would say in my feedback and discussions about the Sewer Authority, I personally would be interested in having a member of Sewer Authority that is experienced on the business side of things. Because I, I get a lot of complaints and concerns mentioned about whether or not the Sewer Authority can handle development, like the development that we are considering in the hearing earlier tonight. And so thinking that some business eye on that might be useful to the board. You can make any motion that you would like here.
Can I just say, I do think because it is a resident and if it was his first choice, I do think a resident should have that ability to be on their first choice.
I concur on that. I concur on that, and I'm gonna be honest, I just texted me and myself. I'm gonna be quite honest. And he said Sewer was always his first choice. One sentence, plain and simple.
Councilman, Councilman Queenen, if you would like to make your motion.
I guess I would like to make a motion to.
To amend the resolution, reflect that Terrence, I'm sorry. So would it be that Terrence Barnes would fill the term on the Norristown Sewer Authority expiring December 31st, 2030, replacing Brad McLaughlin? Would that be what you?
I don't have the paperwork, I ain't gonna lie, I remember that long sentence, so.
You can make the motion as stated.
Yeah, I'll make the motion as stated.
Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call?
Dustin Queenen, William McCoy, Madeira Robinson, Natalie Coulson, Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
Okay, and then vote on the rest of the resolution, cause you amended it, right?
Um, is there a motion to?
So quick question.
Yeah.
So for Brad, will he, is he still?
There was not a motion for that, that would be, there was not a motion to replace Brad on Stormwater.
Will he still go on the Sewer Authority though? Is that enough room for him to be on there as well?
There are not enough vacancies that I'm aware of. I believe there were two vacancies last we checked.
Where?
Sewer Authority.
There's two.
The question was, is there enough?
So Brad can still be on the Sewer Authority?
Well, I think. No. Ms. Griffin was the other Sewer Authority.
I knew that.
So is there a motion to approve resolution?
The amended resolution.
The amended resolution number 25-62.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Madam Secretary, could I have a roll call?
Dustin Queenen.
Aye.
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madeira Robinson. Natalie Coulson. Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, resolution 25-62 is approved as amended. Parks and Recreation. Resolution 25-98, the adoption of the Elmwood Park Master Site Development Plan.
Good evening, Members of the Council. I'm here to present Resolution 25-98 to request your approval to adopt the Elmwood Park Master Site Development Plan, which was prepared by Simone Collins and the Department of Recreation.
Counsel, do you have any questions about the Elmwood Park's Master Site Development Plan?
And I guess the fee schedules to make it, like, I guess, I know we were way below what the regular standard was for, or like the surrounding townships. Is that the child of bringing up to make it kind of, like, I guess on board with every, what every boss charges? Or is there just a need to increase it because we're having more kids?
Can we ask that at the fee schedule portion of the agenda?
Oh, yeah, we can, I was, it's right there, I just figured.
I was confused for a second.
Specifically about the Elmwood Park Site Master Development Plan. Are there any questions related to that? Has there been any changes since we last saw the plan presented? All right, I don't see any other questions. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 25-98 to adopt the Elmwood Park Master Site Development Plan?
Certainly, second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Dustin Queenen.
Aye.
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madeira Robinson.
Aye.
Natalie Coulson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye, the ayes have it, resolution 25-98 is approved. Thank you. Onto our Finance Department, Ms. Pfister, the proposed 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvements Plan, Resolution 25-94.
Good evening, Council. I can start, but this is the third presentation of the 2026 budget. In October 21st, we presented the preliminary budget presentation where each department head presented their detailed request for 2026. At this first pass, there was a $3.3 million revenue gap. At the second presentation on November 5th, actually, the budget was refined and we came down to a revenue gap of 1.69 million. Tonight, we're going to be requesting permission to advertise the budget ordinance.
This is where?
All right, so first up, we had the discussion about the Capital Improvements Plan Resolution.
Yes, first we're gonna talk about the capital projects budget. Then we're gonna talk about the fee schedule and then go into the operating budget. This is the.
Sorry, can I just clarify? We're gonna do agenda items A through D altogether in your presentation, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'll go in order, but.
Thank you.
Okay. The capital improvement budget, this will be Resolution 20, you're not voting on this tonight. This is a presentation and hopefully be presented and voted on, on the December meeting, first December meeting. So this will be the resolution for the capital improvement budget. You have the details in front of you, Alicia gave you all the details for everything. Nothing's changed since the last meeting. And just to show you, the total five-year capital improvement budget is 75 million. The largest items in that is $25 million for the new rec center, phase one and two. $5 million for Roosevelt Field, 20 million for the fire station. For 2026 by itself, it's 13.8 million. We're finding, the first item, it's 6 million of it, we're gonna either do financing and cash. ARPA is supporting 4 million. Bond financing, bond financing is more for the long-term buildings, 30-year financing. In there is part of the rec center, part of the fire station. Then we have liquid fuels for paving and then grants and insurance. So these are the sources of funds for '26. The next slide shows these are the requests by department. And again, in your packet, you have all the detail. So this is it by department for 2026, and there are the notable projects, Polly Park, the paving, lighted, fire station, Public Works Building, which will be done in cash and wayfinding. Are there any questions on the capital improvement program? Again, this is the third time we've presented it and all the details are in your packet.
Counsel, are there any particular improvement questions on the capital improvements plan?
You probably can't answer some, I'm just curious. Are we gonna get presentations, like I know we've been talking about the fire building for a while. I just never saw anything on it yet. Or do, are we gonna have a presentation?
Yes, we are. So in the capital, we have money allocated for those projects. But we, in 2026, we want to do a feasibility study where they'll actually come out, they'll measure the lot, they'll give us the cost breakdown of each and every project. So right now, we can't move forward with civil engineer or architectural work until this passes in the budget. And then at that point, we'll go forward and do an RFP to get those resources.
So is that 20 million, like, not like an educated guess or a sense? Or did we get feedback for like, that's how much it's gonna cost? That's that?
We got, we got feedback. So for the park and recreation, when they did the Elmwood Park Master Plan.
Okay.
They gave us the estimate in there. Also, when we did our fire study, based off other surrounding municipalities of what some of the, cause we're working with the county, as you all know, the county on the fire station. So they gave us a, a small presentation with an estimate of what, based off what we're requesting in the firehouse, they gave us an estimate. So that's why we want to do a feasibility, a true feasibility study, to measure the lot, to make sure it fits everything we have. And then at that point, we can give you a accurate estimate.
Okay. So like you said, we're not, we're not voting on anything right now, right? Or, what did you say earlier? We're just showing us this or?
Well, this is the budget for capital improvement, so these are the projects.
Right, so we're approving a budget, but do we, do we still got again, like, approve?
We're not spending any money yet.
Yeah.
We still have to come before council to.
Can you go back a slide?
I got it.
Can you go back a slide, where the, back again, back one more.
That's, yeah, that's all I have.
Wait, wait, go back to where you were on the bond financing. There we go. So what you're seeing there, right, again, we don't, from a bond financing, again, those are estimates.
Right.
And you see like there, that's for 2027. So when we do our capital improvement budget, we have to go five years out. So for 2027 and 28 and 29, again, we're estimating that. But once we get our feasibility study and we get true cost, cause the first year in 2026 is nothing, nothing more than architectural, engineer and design work. All right. But then, when we go to 2027's budget, you'll have true cost. Because we'll have a true feasibility study and then so 27 through 30, you'll have true, true cost for the rec center, the fire station. Okay?
Wish list?
Yes.
A wish list?
Well, in 2026, we have, we have to put some kind of estimate in. So I can go to our financing, investment advisors and say, you know, how are we gonna finance all this stuff? We have to have some sort of guidance. So some sort of estimate. But the first year is pretty, pretty tight. Eight, so. But even so, before we have any contract, you will have the opportunity to approve that, individual contracts.
Counsel, are there other questions about the capital improvement plan? You see none?
Now, this is the proposed fee schedule changes.
That's what I got, that's what I got.
Yeah, no, don't go for it.
Yeah, that's what I heard, I heard, I see, that's my.
Yeah. She's ready to answer your questions. So on the next few slides, I have all the changes to the current fee schedule. And in your packet, you have everything there as well. Finance code, and again, we've gone over this in the last few meetings, couple of meetings. So we have finance code and fire. The police department. These are actually, this is, these are new tow rates, and it's actually when the police initiate the towing. Just for clarity sake, rather than the, the towing companies.
We're a phone call we're making. Cause I'm about to say, everybody gonna be calling us, can you tow me? This is a search of.
Oh, for nighttime. That's police. Public Works. Slide increases there. And Recreation. Camp fees. Park permits. Rentals, youth program fees. That's it.
I have one clarifying question about fees generally. It has been my experience, the fees that we charge have to be appropriate for the work done, correct? We cannot be just making money on fees.
Right, it has to, and a lot of the, a few of these that I'm, I was involved in, it's just increasing based on current salaries.
Okay. Councilman Queenen, I know you had a question about the fee schedule.
Oh, I have a phone.
Okay. Any, do any other council members have any other questions about the fee schedule? All right, I see none.
Okay, just to go to past budgets, the municipality is required by law to adopt a balanced budget, meaning revenues have to equal expenditures. The past few years, 2023, we balanced the budget with one mil tax increase and using $943,000 of ARPA. In 2024, we balanced the budget with a quarter mil tax increase and 788,000 of ARPA funding. 2025 was balanced with a one mil tax increase, we could no longer use ARPA. This is our estimate, our current estimate with no tax increase showing in the revenue. And again, we're the 1.6 million dollar short. So this is our revenue. Local and real estate taxes make up 73% of our revenue. The local taxes, they increase as, it's the same percentages, as salaries go up, our local taxes, we get more. That goes up about 500,000 a year. Real estate taxes are flat, unless the assessed value goes up. Unless we raise the taxes, it's gonna be flat. So we're demanding, the only increase in revenue we have are fees to match our salaries or the local taxes. Our expenditures, keeping all the services same, expenditures can be expected to increase by about 1.5 million dollars a year. This is due to salaries and just general inflation. Inflation's about 3% now. Our salary increases probably average about 3.5 to 4% if you include longevity. Services for the past five or six years have been basically the same to keep the taxes down and build up our fund balance. In 2026, staffing was increased to meet the additional demands on departments and improve services to customers. The areas that were increased were safety, parking, cleanliness, recreation programs and services at municipal hall. These are balancing options to reduce expenses, which at this point would be reduce the services we're offering, increase revenue, use fund balance or increase taxes. What we're recommending is to use fund balance to cover the pension increase of 790,000. This is a one-time use. Next year, it's gonna go down by 900,000, the pension, so it is truly a one-time issue. And then we also are recommending raising taxes by one mil. This one mil will increase taxes $69.43 for a single unit. 76% of our properties are single units.
That's per year, correct?
Prime?
That $69 is per year, not.
Per year, yes, annual. So what this would do, it would increase our tax rate from 18.25 to 19.25 mil. Any questions?
Counsel, are there any questions on this portion of the budget presentation?
Well, I have not a.
Councilman Queenen?
Question about the budget per se. I know, Counsel, we talked about civil engagement. And we. And we wanted to do more with the youth and things in Norristown. I'm actually trying to propose an amendment to the budget. It's not changing any dollar amounts, it's just moving dollar amounts from one area to another. Um, under the administration, we have civic activities. Um, there's a $35,000 increase, uh, for youth engagement and things of that nature. I would like to see if we can move that underneath for the council's budget. So therefore, we will have, um, oversight over it. Because of right now, it would be under the administration's budget where we technically don't have oversight of how that money would be used to engage our youth, uh, the administration would. And we're the elected officials, we're the ones that pulls out the connection with the community. Um, so I would love to see us move the 35,000. We can still work with the administration, but move it under the council, because then you would need council to vote on it, on how the money is being spent. Because if anything's under 23,800, you don't need our approval. Right? Exactly. So I, I see the budget increased by 35,000. And it's for civil engagement. I think that should come.
Yeah, we'll discuss that and.
Yeah, I think that should come under the council's budget, where we're involved in that.
Um, I am wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about how you think that will work?
Oh.
I won't be here. Um, so I won't have say in that. Um, but my first wondering is that I would particularly, um, like to see that money go towards something systemic or sustained or, or, uh, meaningful for the youth in the long term versus, um, something like additional discretionary money that can only be spent on you.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting to put it in discretionary funds. Um, we could just, we could do it for the same line item, civic activities. But right now, as it stands, council doesn't have a say in that money.
Counsel, um, it could be moved under council. It doesn't matter, it's still the same. Because even if it's 23,800, you still have to have three proposals. If it's over 23,800, you still have to send it out to bid. So if it's under administration or council, it's still the same practice. We still have to have processes and procedures. So if you want to move it, let's move it under council.
Okay.
All right. Keep it moving. We're good.
Okay.
Wait, so, hold on, I have one question.
Councilman Griffin.
Um, sorry, Loner, you went really, really fast when you said that. Can you just, um, repeat like what you just said again?
So the procurement laws are the same, no matter what budget it's in. So if we're going to be engaging with any organization, and you want to fund them, even if it's 23,800, you still have to have proposals. Right? You just don't have to go out for a bid, but you still have to have at least three proposals. Now, if it's over 23,800, now we have to send it out for bid. So it's the same practice either way. And the other thing too, is even if you had an organization, we would still have to create processes and procedures on how we're going to administer the funds, who's going to manage the funds, meaning that if the organization you select is Organization X, what are the do-outs? What are you going to require from them? Because when they send that in to get payment, we have to verify that in the process. So the process is the same in either department. So I'm okay with the bid under council, but we still have to have processes.
It'll still be the same. Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad you said that. I have a question now. Because I want council to be involved in that. So if you put it under for council, and it's under 23,800, are you allowed to spend that without us agreeing to it? Because even though it's under the council, I'm not saying you're, I'm just asking a question.
No, even if it's under council, we still, even.
So I'm not talking about like, I get what you said, like policy procedures and stuff like that. But I just want to make sure that council's part of that program where we have to vote for it, how the money's going to be spent.
You, you would, even if it's less than 23,800, we just still don't spend, because we still, when we present it to council in a resolution, we still show that, it still should show that we've had three proposals.
Right. See, maybe, am I incorrect? I thought if it's under 23,000, it changed, you didn't have to come to council's approval. Am I wrong?
It's not.
Can I see if I'm understanding you correctly? That, I think the question is, if it's under the administrator line as it is now, and not moved under council, could you do anything with that money without coming to council?
No.
I, I thought you, I thought you could. Like, if you wanted to do something for 10,000, you wouldn't have to come to us for approval.
Yeah, we still have to go through the proposal process.
I get that part.
From the procurement process, right? Then we still come to you with the resolution. If you look at some of your resolutions, they still say, um, we still come to you.
That might be your standard practice. That could be your standard practice. But I'm just talking about per the charter. You don't have to. That, that might be your practice, I think. But under the charter, I think.
If it's under 23,800, we don't have to go to council.
Right.
We, we don't, but our practice has been to notify.
Yeah, okay. So I, 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 I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
And so the secondary question being that if it comes under council, can any of that money be spent without coming to council, the body, on that line item?
If it's under where? Under council?
I think the question is, if the line item on the budget is under the council budget, at any dollar amount, can any of the money be spent without coming to council? Is that the question?
I'm not.
And not, well.
Because I just want to make sure council's involved in it.
I'm not following.
Like without a vote? Like, are you saying without a vote? Like?
Correct.
Okay.
It wouldn't have to be a vote, it would just.
Or, but I think, so when you were saying, okay, hold on. So he was saying, with the standard practice, you're saying that it was your standard practice. He was saying, technically it's not in the charter. You were saying, but that's the practice that you've been ex, like doing, uh, when it comes to that. I think he's asking, is that going to, that practice going to carry over when it's under council? Is that correct? That practice of, or is it, once it comes under council, any dollar amount has to be, I think that's.
What we could do is, we can, just like we do the council expenditures, we send that out, we can do the same thing for that account.
Okay.
Anything under your department can send out.
But we would have to have some type of policy in place, because if, like.
Then we could make.
If, if council.
I think that's what I'm asking.
She wanted something, but.
We can work it out.
All right. So I think that there's interest in developing a policy specifically related to the funds for civic engagement and civic activities, um, but a desire to move it under council.
Correct. Because council should, we, we talk to the community.
And then we'll figure out a procedure later.
No, no, no.
No question?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Is there a pot or somehow that council as a whole, as a body, we oversee a line item? The only money that I know that we oversee is the discretionary funds, which where I don't get, like a report of yours or yours of mine. I'm just wondering, when you say move it to council, what does, is that the same as a discretionary?
No, like you can make another line item under civic.
Yeah, there'll be something under your department, and we'll just.
Free.
Part of the monthly report that we do, we'll send, send you all that same report. It's not a large line item, so there's.
But it's a, it would be a line that we are able to monitor but not draw from?
And I guess we'll have, like you said, we'll have to make policies or procedures around it.
We'll have to figure out who, how, how to manage it, how to approve the programs.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get clear to what the question is.
Because I just want to make sure we're part of that process. Because I think people expect this.
Without you knowing. That's what you're worried about.
And our approval, right.
Okay.
And I think that's what people expect from us.
Yeah, that's fine.
So.
Okay. That works. We'll figure out a policy.
So my, so my recommendation then is, if we're going to move this under council, then we need to have a policy in place before this budget is passed. Because if we have it in there, then there's no policy or in place. Because again, I know.
We can put it in a mega policy.
But I'm not understanding how, so is council going to have a majority vote to say, okay, we're going to approve XYZ organization, even if it's under 23,800?
Yeah, four votes like we normally do. We give majority, majority vote.
So it'd be more of a motion than a resolution?
We'll put the policy together.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay, now.
Who then prompts the proposal?
Uh, Councilwoman Robinson.
The hope for the council oversight, that council will approve, that council would propose initiatives to happen, and then those things would then would be paid for, is the hope that things that are proposed, we would know every dollar that goes out?
Exactly.
I asked too, which one to?
Oh, I, I, basically that when, well, we have a say in it. And then we could work with administration, we could work with other people, but council has to approve whatever we're doing with that money.
That, I think that makes sense. But I'm, just so I'm clear, are you hoping though that council would propose ideas for how the money is spent? Or are you looking at whatever comes to us?
It don't have, we're a partnership.
We're a partnership, but we don't currently own a line like that. So I'm just trying to understand.
By council, a member could come, we could talk about it as a group, like we're supposed to. And administration could bring someone, we could talk as a group. I just want council to be in there, because we're the representatives or servants of the community. And we are supposed to have a pulse on, you know, what would help benefit our community. I just want to make sure we're involved in our process.
So the portion of the increase will move to your department?
Correct.
Under the same title, civic.
How much is it? 35,000? Okay. That won't affect our bottom line, but.
Right, exactly. So.
Um, so right now, the total tax rate will go from 18.25 to 19.25. We're going to do something a little bit different this year. Uh, we're going to split out, um, a fire fund, fire tax, and an EMS tax. So what'll happen, the, um, the fire fund will be, where is it? The fire tax will be 7.16. The EMS tax will be .07 mil, and the general fund will be 12.02. So that, it's two good things. People will see where the money is going. And I see it as comparability. Not a lot of municipalities have paid firefighters, paid professional firefighters. So it's also better for comparison as well. Yes, sir?
One of my concerns is always, I'm, I come from insurance background and stuff like that, to make sure we don't get sued or anything of that nature. We, we gotta make sure we have all the documentation. I don't know if it's there or not. But like, whenever we do, um, pay increases and promotions, we have, you, we gotta have that on file. Because we can get sued internally, externally, if we don't. So before we go to approve this budget, is that something like, should we send that to someone to take a look at that to make sure we got our ducks in a row? Or not?
I thought I sent, did I send it to you?
Because, because the only reason I ask that, because I asked for information, I didn't get it yet. I'm.
I thought I gave that to you.
Not you. Not you. I, I, not, you gave me everything I asked for, but I asked for a certain documentation. I just want to make sure we're okay with it.
The job descriptions?
Huh?
The job descriptions? Did you get those?
No, um, the matrix for the, uh, rate increases and stuff like raises, promotions, documentation. Because I know if we don't have that, we open ourselves up for internal lawsuits and external lawsuits. So I just want to make sure that we have it on a place. If not, I don't know how we make sure we get that in place, or.
We, we do have that. It's with HR. Um, I have it. Now, if you need us to vet it through legal, if that's what you want us to do to verify that.
But, because, because, remember, I just, I just asked, I don't have to see nobody's personal stuff.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just wanted to see the matrix that were used. I didn't get it. So that scares me.
We have the matrix. I, I just need to clear that with legal, because it has individuals' names and stuff like that.
I don't, yeah, I don't need to see that. But you, you probably have a format that you put all that information.
And we have a formula.
And that's all I was requesting, was the format that you use. So since I didn't get it, it scares the heebie-jeebies out of me.
I have it, but if, if I can redact the names, that's fine. But I can show you the, the whole matrix. I'll send that to you guys first thing tomorrow morning.
Right. Because you gotta have a blank form. Because you gotta, you can use it over and over again. So.
Yeah, I would prefer that to be fully redacted.
But you don't, you should have a blank form, shouldn't have to redact anything. Because I, I was super, when I use the same form, I do performance evaluations, I put your information in there. There's always a blank form right there. So.
I can have, I can send you a blank form, but that's what.
Yeah, that's all. That's, I just wanted to see the criteria and things of that nature.
Okay.
Counsel, um, any other questions?
And I'm just to clarify one more time, the, in the next meeting, I'm requesting to advertise tonight, the, um, budget ordinance to, for the general fund to be 12.02. That's ordinance 2508. And then ordinance 2509 will be for the fire tax of 7.16 and the EMS tax rate of .07. So you're going to see two ordinances instead of one total ordinance.
And you already said it, but to be very clear, um, that is not us raising any fire tax by seven, it is taking out.
It's splitting.
Um, what is currently in the general fund for fire.
And splitting it out.
And.
This has nothing to do with numbers. This is my last question, I promise you. If we approve to advertise it, are we allowed to make adjustment afterwards?
We can go down, we can't go up.
No, great.
Okay.
But, so if we approve it, we still could make an adjustment if we say, oh.
Approved to advertise, yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So you got me on the right road. I appreciate you.
Also, in your, uh, packet, did you put that one in there? There's something that breaks out, the general fund, the fire service fund, and the EMS. So you can see the breakdown of it in your packet.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um.
Oh, it's in your agenda packet, yes.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, is there a motion to advertise ordinance 2508 to adopt the fiscal year 26 budget and establish the real estate tax rate for 2026? Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Queenen?
Aye.
Liam McCoy?
Aye.
Adia Robinson?
Aye.
Natalie Colson?
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Becca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it. Uh, motion to advertise. Um, and is there authorization to advertise ordinance 25 dash zero nine to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget establishing the fire and EMS tax rate for 2026?
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin McCoy?
I'm Justin.
It's been a long night.
This is a long meeting. Justin Queenen?
Aye.
Liam McCoy?
Aye.
Adia Robinson?
Aye.
Natalie Colson?
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Becca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it. And we'll advertise that. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. I'm going to.
And last, but certainly not least, we have Planning and Municipal Development Resolution 25 dash 99, a request for preliminary final land development approval for 1001 Powell Street, AKA the Montgomery County Library.
Good evening, council members. Hopefully this will be a quick one, since you're familiar with this project. This is the, uh, a request for 1001 Powell Street, Montgomery County Library. If you recall, council, uh, the county presented their plans and, uh, redevelopment of the Norristown Public Library. And, uh, that was, believe it or not, February of this year. They have since, uh, applied for the final, preliminary and final land development, which was on April, um, 2025. The applicant has gone through the zoning hearing process and received all the variances. So we're glad that went through smoothly. Uh, Penone issued their first submission review letter on July 21st. Um, and, uh, Eustace, that's their engineer, they submitted their updated plans in August of, uh, 2020th. Penone issued the second, uh, review on, uh, September 10th. And then the county went to the Norristown Design Review Board, where the review board recommended, uh, approval for the preliminary and final. And then they went to the planning commission, and the planning commission also recommended approval. So I'm pleased to, uh, invite the county, you're right here, Ms. Penone. If council has any questions, if you want them to go through the, the presentation again, whichever way you want, uh, they're ready to present. But, uh, planning department also recommends approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions on the preliminary final land development approval for the library?
I'm just excited. I'm ready. This was my favorite place growing up. I lived in that library. Because I think it's still at the same corsets, when I was going there as now. So I, I really do appreciate that. Um, this is a long time coming. I, I know when it's over, our kids are going to love it. It could be a center, uh, for different activities. So I'm, I'm really excited about this.
Agreed. I'm very excited about it. Um, spent a lot of time walking there myself as a child. And I think everybody deserves what you're planning to do here. Um, with that, is there a motion to approve as?
I'm sorry.
Yes. Oh, please. Yes.
So this is in regards to the waivers. So, and I just wanted to make sure we got on the record, I just have a correction for one of the waivers. Yeah. So, um, the section was initially 282 dash 433.2B. It was a waiver from, uh, the street tree requirement. The correct section is 282 dash 433.3B. Instead of 2B, it's 3B now.
So a title change, but not a substantive change in use? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, number six, I, they have addressed that waiver in regards to the.
We would just put wait, we would just put.
We would just put wait, we would just put wait, it's fine.
So, we would like to withdraw, that waiver could be withdrawn, because they
We understand, yes.
Okay.
I think council's aware.
You're aware of that? Okay, I just want to make sure it was on the record, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, is there a motion to approve resolution 25-99 for preliminary final land development approval for 1001 Powell Street, the Montgomery County Library?
So moved.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Justin Queenan?
Aye.
Liam McCoy?
Aye.
Adia Robinson?
Aye.
Natalie Coulson?
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it, resolution 25-99 is approved, thank you.
When do we expect to have this finished?
Just remember, your name is on the building, not just the camera.
Timing is
Okay, demo was just about complete. Okay. We have some
Phase one of demo.
Yeah, phase one of demo, we have some negotiations going on with some labor unions that, we need, we need to settle with those before we can put it out to bid. Okay. We hope to get it out to bid in January, so
Thank you.
We can't wait. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.